Councilwoman Luiziana. Councilwoman Figueroa Kenber. Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilwoman Harrison. Councilwoman Williams.
President.
Council President Preston. Myself, Randy Garcia, Mr. President. Mr. Denver, Mr. Weston Bridges, Scott McHale, Assistant Attorney for Trenton. He's present. And Mr. Ray Fuller, who is present. Councilman, Councilman. On your call, Madam President.
President.
Certainly, Madam President, if you wish, I will be, uh, as a standing ovation. All by God, the folks of faith of man in ancient, we most humbly seek thee to bless this our city's deliberations and these thy servants, that they may have wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and by greater glory than.
Amen.
Uh, just a note of housekeeping to the council and, uh, to anybody that does wish to come from up the mountain, please do speak into the mic. Try my best here. Please do speak into the microphone. We have the fans here, so that I'm not gross to the evening. Um, so please do be mindful of that. Uh, and Madam President, this time, I believe, we are presentations and recognitions. I understand there are a couple of recognitions that, uh, we have this evening.
Councilwoman Luiziana.
So we're here to say that I'm, um, someone who I think, uh, does what we think, uh, the, uh, city in our youth here, we're here in Trenton, so I want to recognize Mrs. Stacy Hattie. Stacy Hattie born, raised, educated in Trenton, Jersey. He graduated from Trenton Central High School in nineteen eighty-eight and obtained his degree from the Vining University. Stacy is a competent coachmaster and certified literacy tutor with Liter- Literacy Volcanator of America. This was Stacy's workfall to give him back, assisting his fellow brothers and sisters in the community with basic literacy skills. Stacy's very practiced, very proud of the accomplishment of being a non-max school teacher trained also in two thousand and sixteen, and is now a certified life coach. And whereas the program director of third, that brings out another male mentoring program, which is also called the Z Mentoring Program, has established partnership with the Trenton Area Strategic and multiple brands and homes at Bart's Act and Royal Homegate where they began the adopt the Z project in two thousand and nine. C, mainly over a powerful MLK record, which proceeds with closely go to their annual college tour as thousands of people. The Z male mentoring program has a ninety-five percent success rate with the young men going to college for the military. Whereas Stacy is the founder of Hilda City, who focused building positive community efforts. Hilda City is an initiative under the Z male mentoring program, which started a positive billboard campaign and has produced over seventy billboard showcasing our young people of Trenton and a positive light. Hilda City's latest billboard initiative are attendance matters, showcasing youth throughout the city with perfect attendance. The generous fall showcasing twenty competent young men in suits on billboards. Most recently, Stacy's latest initiative is the I-DU Institute Increase the Peace Campaign, also featured on Channel Six Avenue. This initiative is designed to increase crime in our city through youth protective programs. Stacy continued to serve the community, is a principal as the director of community engagement for Iowa, impacting the lives of those living in the city of Trenton. Now, there are appropriate regards, and Trenton City Council wishes to recognize Stacy Hattie for his love and positive impact on our youth and the city of Trenton. I also wanted to acknowledge Stacy because, uh, when Trenton Central High School was at its all-time high at certain point, uh, a couple of years back, and Trent High was winning basketball games, the cheerleaders went to visit, uh, who were playing at Hightown, was it Hightown Stacy? Stacy?
Yes, Hightown.
Hightown game, and the crowd was very moved to our team, throwing bottles at the cheerleaders, who were throwing bottles at our basketball players, and Stacy took it upon herself to make sure that those girls were recognized or not reacting and acting in a mature manner that they did react to the crowd. So I just want to say thank you for all that you do, always trying to light on our young people, and continue to, uh, I don't know if anyone else would like to add anything, or we go to?
Well, just to thank you all, uh, Stacy, um, I'm very thankful, I appreciate it, and, uh, tremendously, uh, for you. Um, our family, this family has been loving one another, but what can you do for our children, it's a matter of few, and I'm so glad that council, because I was, uh, so into my mommy doing, she hasn't done it, and one of her has. But I'm so glad that she did, and so deserved real things, and so much more. Thank you, just feeling the much you've brought for me, for what you can do, mommy, family, children, we need that, and I think we need to duplicate it a few more times over, but thank you, thank you, thank you.
Just wanted to add, it's a couple of things. What you do is amazing in the city, what you do for you, when you've gone to go, uh, earn, be a artist in the city, the unified trend, to show people how special places and your vision, your imagination, and your will to make things happen, for some of the city can never be in that pool, but some of us still need to make people everything that we know, everything we want to.
Yeah, no matter, uh, Stacy, so, to echo sentiments from our colleagues, you do the work, it's wonderful. Many people talk about things that they'd like to see done, right, and it sounds silly in the moment, but you actually put your words into action, and so with that, I'm thankful to you, the work that you have done, how I do, how I do, and you be consistent, and that's very important, and you show a positive influence. So many times, you know, we can look at the negative aspect, sometimes we feel like something, but the negative pieces was on the way, she was speaking in a different direction, and you show that there are wonderful people, right, townspeople here in the city of Trenton, to tap into you, so with that, I say thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, this is, this is really nice. Just happy, so, uh, thank you. It's always good to be able to hear our, uh, patients, right, the community, uh, it's always good to put that, that they are appreciated, uh, at my job, I am a supervisor, manager, director, everything, you know, please, I'm, uh, sure, that, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, just talking about the whole project, and, uh, and that really just felt good, it didn't lie to, you know, it was all part of the, of the heart, is what I talk about, kindness, and, uh, kindness, and say those things, and, uh, the person who do the work, not just give them hard, and keep them working, and they go back and go, uh, appreciate it. You talk about, uh, things I do, I get to all the credit, you know, my right hand, she's here to give it all up in here, I, uh, need, I, uh... Uh, you say, uh, 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 but you, you like, uh, 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 passion, respect, and, uh, 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 who want to get, we just got here, uh, 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 On your call, Madam President.
President.
Madam President, the next order that I have is the municipal public hearing. We will hold this, uh, open up to the public, uh, regarding budgetary members of the public, who are speaking regarding the budget at this time. Madam President, this seat nine, if you want most focused public, public hearing.
Madam President, open the hearing.
Move to the second, go vote, Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Luiziana. Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Figueroa Kenber. Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilwoman Harrison. Councilwoman Williams. And Council President Preston. Motion, Gary. Now, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to amend, to amend the budget, they have a budget amendment instruction, plus motion thirty-three, three-nine-four, resolutions to approve, found the year, found the year twenty-twenty-three minutes of current on budget amendments for the city of Trenton, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve. Move to the second, go vote, Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kenber. Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilwoman Harrison. Councilwoman Williams. Council President Preston.
Yes.
Motion, Gary, thank you. Moving on, Madam President, do you want to? Um, ordinance six, second reading. And fire to that reading. Madam President, if you want to ask for a, maybe, motion to approve, uh, the events.
I have a motion to approve the events.
Thank you, move to the second, go vote, Councilwoman Harrison. Councilwoman Luiziana.
Yes.
Thank you, sorry. Councilwoman Figueroa Kenber. Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilwoman Harrison. Councilwoman Williams. Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Motion, Gary. Thank you. And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve, to new pictures and positions.
I have a motion to approve.
Second. Go vote, Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Luiziana. Councilwoman Figueroa Kenber. Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilwoman Harrison. Councilwoman Williams. And Council President Preston.
Yes.
Motion, Gary.
Uh, Stacy, I mean, I know we can switch, please, answer the question, if I may, if you had a question about the communication and, uh, you would further, like, the issue, but you, you think, is this a comment you ask, uh, what is, or is it a comment you ask, uh, what is?
I could just, uh, yeah, recording will run, if you want to take it out, it's, uh, immediately out of your time, yeah, go vote. Uh, come on, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve, uh, approve the courts.
Um...
So we pass communications sessions, we do, so... So Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Luiziana. Councilwoman Figueroa Kenber. Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilwoman Harrison. Councilwoman Williams. And Council President Preston. Motion, Gary, thank you. Madam President, moving on to ordinance six, second reading. Ordinance twenty-three dash zero three-eight, the ordinance regulating the number of packages, other arrangements, uh, who are speaking on this ordinance at this time. Seeing now, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve. Councilwoman Harrison. Councilwoman Luiziana. Councilwoman Figueroa Kenber. Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilwoman Harrison. Councilwoman Williams. And Council President Preston.
Yes.
Motion, Gary. Uh, ordinance twenty-three dash zero four-five, ordinance supplement chapter twenty-one, city code, city of Trenton, regarding spaying, littering, and breeding of dogs and cats.
And, uh, 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 I already spoke with, um, Garcia, uh, Mr. Pato, and, uh, I did have one of these amendments, uh, so, um, so in, under section one, um, statement of veteran, on the first page, I'd like to, like, a, you know, for our Roman rule one, right after taking the veteran, where it talks about the likes of the American nation party, that all that's big, so, so on, so forth, and then right onto that paragraph, I'd like to add Roman rule two, to say, the veteran has given specific veterinary guidance on the lane that's priming of the required surgical procedure related to the national road, and, uh, and conclude my remarks.
Yes, so, you have, uh, as, so, motion to approve, definitely. Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve, ordinance seven.
I have a motion to approve.
Uh, so, please, uh, 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 okay. So I have a motion to approve. And a second. Thank you. Councilwoman Harrison. Councilwoman Luiziana. Councilwoman Figueroa Kenber. Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilwoman Harrison. Councilwoman Williams. And Council President Preston. Motion, Gary. Uh, act open to the public, uh, other arrangements, uh, who are speaking on this ordinance at this time. Madam President, this seat nine, so, ordinance amended, uh, you know, we have, uh, a motion, uh, for this, let's start being, uh, moving on to twenty-three, uh, this. And I'll take a moment, uh, to, uh, that's, thank you. So, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Councilwoman Harrison. This is forty-five, right? Councilwoman Harrison, thank you. Councilwoman Luiziana. Councilwoman Figueroa Kenber. Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilwoman Harrison. Councilwoman Williams. And Council President Preston. Motion, Gary. Moving on to ordinance twenty-three dash zero four-six, capital ordinance providing improvements to various roads of the county of Trenton and county of Jersey, state of New Jersey, created one billion five hundred twenty-one thousand four hundred and seven dollars to pay for lost airway, which amounted under by a grant from this particular twenty-twenty-three municipal aid program, received or expected to be received by the city from the state of New Jersey Department of Transportation. Other arrangements, speaking this ordinance. Seeing now, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Move to the second, go vote, Councilwoman Harrison. Councilwoman Luiziana. Councilwoman Figueroa Kenber. Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilwoman Harrison. Councilwoman Williams. And Council President Preston. Motion, Gary. Ordinance twenty-three dash zero four-seven, the ordinance of city of Trenton, county of Jersey, state of New Jersey, mandating supplement city code to create a new chapter two-fourteen type of project, they were created. Other arrangements, speaking this ordinance. Seeing now, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Second.
Councilwoman Harrison. Councilwoman Luiziana. Councilwoman Figueroa Kenber. Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilwoman Harrison. Councilwoman Williams. Council President Preston. Motion, Gary. Moving on to resolutions. And Madam President, we have the second agenda, the oral resolutions, one, three, dash, three-eight-six, three-eight-seven, three-eight-eight, three-eight-nine, three-ninety, three-ninety-one, three-ninety-three, three-ninety-five, three-ninety-six, three-ninety-seven, three-ninety-eight, three-ninety-nine, four oh one, four oh three, four oh four, four oh six. If Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve, this is...
I have a motion. Come on.
So move to the second, go vote, Councilwoman Harrison. Councilwoman Luiziana. Councilwoman Figueroa Kenber. Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilwoman Harrison. Councilwoman Williams. And Council President Preston.
Yes.
Motion, Gary. We want to vote all resolutions. Resolutions twenty-three dash three-one-three, resolution normalizing expenditure of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the funds allocated to the city of Trenton under the American Rescue Plan Act twenty-twenty-one, which teaches play in the study of these various hours.
Council President, I call the, uh, we will be going to the bottom of the, 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 uh, to make sure the final balance is about two, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
We make sure you have a real, uh, second, uh, that, uh, uh, uh. Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Thank you, move to the second. Councilwoman Harrison. Move to the second. Councilwoman Luiziana. Councilwoman Figueroa Kenber. Move to the second. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison. Here again, uh, here again, uh, 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 versus six, Trenton, potential numbers, twenty, twenty-thirteen, dash, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-seventeen, dash, eighty-three, twenty-six, and twenty-seventeen, dash, eighty-three, twenty-three, the claim amount, thirty thousand, twenty-six dollars, including returnees in loss.
I have a motion. Second.
Councilwoman Harrison. Three, three, three.
No.
No. Move to the second. Councilwoman Luiziana. Councilwoman Figueroa Kenber. Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilwoman Harrison. Councilwoman Williams. And Council President Preston. Motion, Gary. Resolution twenty-three dash three forty-four, resolution normalizing current accounts for private payments and municipal payments, the ordinance, uh, who made first twenty-two and four, the bond ninety-nine, uh, four, bond one, two, one oh seven, Market Street, AKA Uber Street, Trenton, New Jersey.
I have a motion. Thank you.
Sorry, move to the second.
Hammer.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harrison. Councilwoman Luiziana. Councilwoman Figueroa Kenber. Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams. And Council President Preston.
Yes.
Motion, Gary. Resolution twenty-three dash three-five, resolution normalizing sale, not all of that is on second property, moving square car pursuit to the social prepared program.
I have a motion. Thank you.
Councilwoman Harrison. Councilwoman Luiziana. Councilwoman Figueroa Kenber. Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilwoman Harrison. Councilwoman Williams. Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Motion, Gary. Resolution twenty-three dash three-nine-two, resolution normalizing, uh, 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 total amount of, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I have a motion. Second.
Councilwoman Harrison. Councilwoman Luiziana. Councilwoman Figueroa Kenber. Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilwoman Harrison. Councilwoman Williams. Council President Preston. Motion, Gary. ordinance, resolution twenty-three dash four zero two. Moving on to the fourth, uh, with the question? We did correct? And now move to number one? Okay, resolution two, resolution two three down here, twenty-three hundred and seventy four, on, 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 Madam President, you want to ask for a motion? Yeah, I can come on here and...
Madam President? Um, any of those were nothing to impress that the administration from a budget representation for them? They were a little... Was it, was that again? That was my... Any of the other ones? If you had a one minute, what presentation? We were expecting, a million of us were expecting someone from the administration coming here and the presentation, the probably one of the best in the department. Considering the presentation we thought had won the... So, Madam President, I'm not... Yeah. So, the public was only able to ask, but this was there time, I thought, to ask, because the public, how do you envision the public? So... We could ask that question on the board. We could ask that question, uh, we could have, um, we could have a communication, um...
Good evening, Madam President and Madam Council. Um, we're having a meeting, hard time hearing cases that are going on in, and I hear like many from the state. So, but, um, from what I gather, there are some, whether it should have been in the presentation today, that would be, is not the case. Uh, the, the budget one presented, the council will be twenty-second, and it was, uh, introduced in twenty-second. Today was actually for the amendment that was in front of us, that, 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 that we have in front of you. This is actually one of three actions that we actually have to take moving forward. Um, do you have the dates with you there?
Sorry?
Do you have the dates?
Uh, I have.
Do you have?
I have, hold on one second, thank you.
Mr. Bruce?
Yes. Um, he's actually has a timeline that he emailed out.
Yes, so the, the dates, the dates, the important date that we now have in front of us after today is actually the, uh, June thirteenth, the budget amendment will be published on June thirteenth, and then on June nineteenth, there will be a budget amendment public hearing, and, or is it a, a, ah, September, right? September, yes, yes, September, which is the, at the next council meeting. But normally, this is actually for the pub today, was actually for the public to have an opportunity to come and voice their opinion on what was being presented today, but it's not necessarily a presentation. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce.
When you go, Madam President?
Let's continue.
Certainly, we refer at resolution twenty-three dash four oh two.
Correct.
Resolution designated EAT online export LLC as redevelopment, uh, certain property common units thirty-one, thirty-three, one oh six, one oh eight, one oh nine, one ten, one eleven, one twelve, one fourteen, and one sixteen, Chambers Street, located within central redevelopment area, approving purchase, sale, and redevelopment agreement for said property, and authorizing execution of said agreement in a total amount of ten thousand dollars.
I have a motion.
So, move.
Second. Second, hold, Councilman Edwards?
Yes.
Councilman Falciano?
Yes.
Councilman Figueroa Geller?
Yes.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President, President?
Yes.
Motion to carry. Resolution twenty-three dash four oh five, resolution authorizing contracts in mobile needs modular space for installation of electrical and plumbing for two modular units for training and control for the Department of Health and Human Services awarded through Educational Services Commission of New Jersey, ESCNJ twenty twenty-one dash forty-three, in amount of received one hundred ninety-three thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars.
I have a motion.
So, move.
Second.
It's moved, I'm sorry, it was moved by?
Yes.
Moved by Williams and seconded by? Heard for the sound. Thank you. Councilman Edwards?
Yes.
Councilman Falciano?
Yes.
Councilman Figueroa Geller?
Yes.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President, President?
Yes.
Motion to carry. Resolution twenty-three dash four oh eight, resolution designated needs real estate as redevelopment of various properties, check, to check something on that, and located within central redevelopment area.
I have a motion.
So, move.
Second.
Roll call, Councilman Edwards?
Yes.
Councilman Falciano?
Yes.
Councilman Figueroa Geller?
Yes.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Council President, President?
Yes.
Motion to carry. Resolution twenty-three dash four oh nine, resolution requesting the administration to review and take necessary action, which respect traffic control on certain streets within the city of Trenton.
I have a motion.
So, move.
Second.
Thank you. Councilman Edwards?
Yes.
Councilman Falciano?
Yes.
Councilman Figueroa Geller?
Yes.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President, President?
Yes.
Motion to carry. Madam President, we want to ordinances from first reading. Ordinance twenty-three dash zero four eight, ordinance amending chapter one forty-six of the Code of City of Trenton, supplementing various redevelopment plans and land development ordinance to permit cannabis use. And Madam President, I understand that we have some proposal amendments to this ordinance at this time?
Yes, I know it's all in the...
Okay.
Okay, uh, the first one is amendment number six on your application process, and what the, uh, amendment would be is to say that the applicant shall submit a petition for conditional permit in amount of ten thousand dollars. Micro licenses shall submit a one thousand dollar track residence that are socially equipped and petition to receive fifty percent discount from all local licensees.
And then, hold on a second.
Yes, so the amendment, uh, looking for the track specialty, uh, also number two, shall be set up sale of license to get fifty percent, which is out of the later. Uh, and any entity that's seen some of the transfer types of education license must appear to the same state considering cannabis all, and very closely regulations. And then the third one is under, uh, section forty-eight seven, the extra six for the dedication. So, say if following further, there remaining one half fifty percent of all revenue collected through chapter forty-seven, article seven, cannabis access, and one half fifty percent of all revenue collected through chapter one forty-six, cannabis businesses shall be dedicated toward mental health outreach services for the city of Trenton, Department of Health and Human Services, and the city of Trenton Public Health Leadership Committee for good, which is the equal tax around the shares.
And Madam President, I think you point out your motion to approve the amendments?
So, I have a motion to approve the three amendments, uh, as, uh, just right.
So, move.
Second.
So, moving second, hold, Councilman Edwards?
All right, I need to get a minute to catch up to where these amendments will be entered ordinance?
Certainly.
That I just wanted to go. Yeah, I was six, is second on the first two, which is, uh, discussion forty-seven dash twenty-six. The, uh, the file, there's one portion, uh, the first one thousand, that may not be sufficient, I'd say, that the application is nine out, shall see, so we've got about five thousand, and then, uh, so submit, micro licenses submitted the one thousand dollar application, so, um, my decision actually would be with all this. Is that like a withdrawal of the first one? Okay, that fraction was, was placed in the, uh, in the ordinance. So, you're saying that, that the applicant's application is denied? Yes. With refunding them five thousand dollars? Yes, as, as always in the original. So, we're giving that, and they swallowed withdrawal of that amendment. Thank you. Uh, the other two amendments, uh, the recent transfer fee from ten thousand to fifty thousand dollars? And the council is one?
Yes.
You're copying, uh, because we all have, the number seven, the ten thousand is stricken, and fifty thousand is underlined already. Okay, did copy that, and I have that. That's the parts, and I've looked all that one too. Okay. Or somehow, I got the full copy. Um, and then, so what called that amendment? And then, the number of eight amendments, uh, that one will still save, it's saving to be the dedication of most, of that's why. Fifty percent, I'd say. So, that one still keep the original, uh, fifty percent that was said and dedicated, uh, to, uh, mentorship, etc., for, uh, people who want to go as a cannabis industry, and the fifty percent would go to, uh, infrastructure streets division and outreach mental health services, so we would be providing for the Department of Health and Human Services actual mental health industries in any of this. I agree. So, that part is stricken out, you're saying don't take it out? Yeah, I would like that one stripped out, but I'd like, uh, we're under trying to make it clear that that fifty percent would be for infrastructure on the streets division, and then the other fifty, uh, the part of fifty percent would be towards, uh, Department of Health and Human Services for mental health outreach, not in the street. Hmm. The one... Yes, Mr. Bruce, you want to make it out? Excellent, please.
Can I make one?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, thank you, Madam President. So, um, uh, as we think about the cannabis ordinance and, uh, you know, what will, what the financial impact that it will have on the city, uh, one of the things that we should take into consideration is that the city has to be self-sustainable, and, you know, that, that goes to the conversation that we've been having with the Department of Community there, finding new sources of revenue for it to be safe, self-sustainable, to stay, you know, it's pretty much sending that message time and time again, and we have that message of a Tuesday, and, and when we talking about the revenue that the cannabis licensing is going to bring to the city, uh, we really don't even know, not so yet, how much money is that going to entail? If it's millions, money that pretty much is coming down from the sky, money that we can possibly use for, um, future budgets, um, it could make it a, a, a financial, a, a very reasonable financial impact on the city for, uh, operating budgets. The recommendation from, from us is that you would consider waiting to see what happens in the coming years, as to how much money is being collected, because when we talking about fifty percent of, 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 of the total revenue, it could be, it could be millions. So, I would strongly recommend to the council that perhaps there will be a time in the future where the door that can be amended in the future, uh, based on the revenue that we see coming. I am sure that these people also have a saying as to, you know, what revenue they're, they're telling us that we need to increase licensing fees and any other fees in the city for us to actually continue to be self-sustainable. And as I mentioned, this money is something, it's more license, it's an opportunity for the municipality, for the city of Trenton, to actually find a little source of revenue. I, you know, mental health is absolutely in, in need, uh, throughout the city, absolutely, but I strongly recommend that if we take a step back and have, let's see what happens in the coming years before we can say, uh, you know, fifty percent should go to mental health, because that may be the huge cut in the amount of revenue that the city will be, will not be seeing, because this money will be set aside for, for those specific reasons. One of the things that we also need to keep into consideration is that we keep continuing to receive grants from the state for mental health, uh, the Health Department, uh, has instituted a program, as well as the Police Department for mental health. So, uh, there are, uh, initiatives that are, you know, taking place in the city right now, so, um, respect that, and both respect you, Councilman, but this is just my two cents, because the city is not looking good for the future. Everything goes up, as we are all aware, everything, everything is costing a lot more. If we needed twenty-five million years from the state each year for transitional aid, most likely we will be needing forty to forty-five million next year. So, this is why I, I would strongly suggest that you take a step back, yes, and consider mental health, perhaps they, if you want to start somewhere, let's start with a smaller percentage, and, um, allow for the city to collect funding for, for a little while to see where we are, and then we can go back if we visit that, but I would strongly suggest that you please, uh, consider not doing the fifty percent.
Mr. Bruce, so I'm curious, um, that, that part of the orders had been stricken prior to Councilman Williams asking for the amendments, and I'm just curious, was that the same reasoning that went behind striking that portion of the ordinance initially? The same reasoning that we don't want to take fifty percent of something and put it elsewhere than, you know, revenue in the city, because initially it called for fifty percent of all revenue going to cannabis businesses, which I'll be dedicating towards cannabis training facilities, support access, uh, training and mentorship within the reverse cannabis industry. Uh, so was your reasoning, you just gave to us for not incorporating this fifty percent going to mental health services, was that the same reasoning that went into striking this initial from the orders?
Right. Yes, I, I can address that, I was part of this conversation, and that was, that was the thinking. The original version of the ordinance did have that dedication, and I do the thought process was to allow it to go to the general fund for now, and then, like Bruce said, um, perhaps make some adjustments in October.
Madam President?
Please, Madam President. So, based upon what was in here, um, the other night, and the fact that if we go forward in transitional aid acts, we would have to look at eighty-five percent of the amount we receive this year, right, moving forward to budget, to, to be a losing point. While, while I'm all for mental health, and, and all of that, I'm all for that, fifty percent is an aggressive, pretty high number, when we don't know what it could be. So, I would ask, um, Councilwoman Williams to consider maybe a lower, a lower percentage, um, just to start, because we can't always go back in the minute and see what's coming on, so maybe ten percent, fifteen percent, whatever, you know, just to...
So maybe ten percent, fifteen percent, whatever, you know, just to, if we can consider lowering it from fifty, based upon what you heard the other night, which is now, you know, Cruz says, back to. If I may, um, respond, I, I understand, and I shared your concerns, particularly with, quote, Ron Durbin, I don't know you. But my concern is this, we literally tripped, like you said, we don't know how much it's going to be, it could be hundreds of thousands of dollars, it could be millions of dollars. We don't know how long it's going to take for that to all shake out and find out what kind of condition we have here, what the gross revenues are going to be. We're only going to get two percent tax on all those gross revenues. So the money at the beginning will be in the moment that's possibly grows, it could be more and more and more. But between now and then, we have a lot of streets that are being devastated. One of the things as a councilperson, there are constantly all the time, is that how bad the construction, or how bad the streets are, how people's cars are being destroyed, and how we're losing a lot of money because of the conditions that are rooted, not to have a care of our cars. The other side is the mental health problem, which is a terrible problem in our city. We live in an urban area, their urban areas historically have not had the now services that they need. We have just had hospital closed, so that's another one. And I want our city to be able to get away from this, and I want our city to be financially, uh, independent, be able to do what it can do with its own money. I know that's been many years ago now, but what I would like to suggest is I would withdraw the percentage on my amendment and to make it, uh, twenty-five percent, it would be twelve, twelve and a half percent to, uh, streets and twelve and a half percent to the mental health. And that would leave twenty-five percent to the budget. Um, but also we have the other ten percent that is going to all those other initiatives regarding cannabis, perhaps a percentage could be the hood from that and we can add additional ten percent to fill this in the city general revenue that you're suggesting.
So when it comes to streets, uh, Madam President, streets are actively done through, uh, capital budgets. That is where most of it comes out of for streets. We also get funding from NJDOT. Uh, this year we were fortunate to have CDP funding also put aside, which was a, a very good amount of money, but I believe it was too many dollars for, uh, for repairs as well. This year just happened to be one of the most aggressive years in probably a decade or two in the city, and to live on our streets that we are actively preparing. Uh, and, uh, I don't see us having any means to set aside funding for a street because we are in the process of doing that now. I would just, if, if, if the will, I mean, if, if the, if the will this council is to amend it to a twenty-five percent mental health, I, I would much rather see a ten percent and go from there and then we can add on, we go and allow for whatever money remains. Because as we mentioned before, legislature, the legislature is going to care about. There are programs that were built into what these fees are going to do once we collect them as well. So I would much rather just have the money come into the general fund and allow for us to, um, do what we need to do. Not just the streets, but then who is paying for the employees, that is actually a general fund. If not capital, it's the general fund. Who pays for police, general fund. Who pays for firefighters, general funds. Um, you know, it, it's a choice was left, I think, to the residents as to what they would like to see more. I would probably say I'd like to see more police officers. I, I, I agree. I mean, I live in the city, I see the streets, but we're doing a tremendous jump with the amount of work that we are repairing. Yes, we cannot get there at, you know, we have, if we go to Dr. Spalding's say, this is there. I get it, we're not going to get there next week because we already have an agenda, but what happened here, we put it on the agenda to get it done. Uh, but I, I would probably say for, for the purpose of just being cautious, uh, let's reduce the number to a more manageable number, we can have the rest of it go to the general fund until we see what the actual amount will be. And then we can address perhaps increasing as we go along, if we feel that it is not enough.
Thank you. Councilor Harrison, um, that's enough.
Uh, Mr. Cruz, I'm, I'm on the end of the road. PSC right now is laying gas lines off of the city. When our roads are paved, they go rip off on the other painted old street.
We're holding it accountable, just a perfect example of that is Cyrus Avenue. We paid one point something million dollars on fixing that road last year. And then PSC, and mind you, we had conversations with PSC from the year before. Because we had the conversation with PSC, water, sewer, and streets, we all sit down and talk about these other projects that we have for these roadways. And we need to coordinate the, you know, we're not going to fix them in a month or month. So we, we did an exhaustive outreach to all of the residents of Cyrus Avenue to replace their, uh, their lead pipes so that we can have a good road for many years to come because it takes a while for NJDOT to give us that amount of money to repair that road. So we fixed it last year, this year PSC comes back being cute and says, we're going to take them down and we need to repair these, uh, these gas lines again. We threw a fin, they wanted to do half of the roadway, we said, you're not going to do anything, we'll let you replace the entire road from curb to curb again. And so that is a commitment that they have, they are going to be doing curb to curb from wherever they damaged all the way to the end and also, um, um, sprite as well.
They're doing gas lines all over the city.
Yes.
So this is going to be their major issue is right. We have paved roads all over and we're going to have to stay on top of PSC.
Yes, there, uh, Councilman, I do have the ordinance in front of me, so there's the city ordinance that requires, uh, depending on the amount of years that the roadway was repaired, uh, there is after the ordinance assess, if the road was repaired, uh, from, uh, from year, year one to year five, you are to replace the entire street from curb to curb. And I'm, I'm not sure what the year mark are, but if it's six to ten, then you do half of the roadway, that kind of language. Okay, yes, and so, uh, comments is actually part of the month-to-month meeting that we have with PSC to address these concerns. And we are actually being very aggressive. Just so that you know, uh, there was also an issue this, uh, yesterday and today because the, that the schools opened, uh, the schools opened today. And we had an issue with your staff with PSC. We raised our concern because it's, you know, public safety, uh, streets, uh, being closed or overpopulated by vehicles because of their road or, um, Cyrus Avenue. We were actually able to push them back to begin at nine o'clock in the morning instead of eight o'clock in the morning. And that's going to allow for free access for the vehicles to come drop off the kids in front of them. So we are addressing that.
Next morning, Anderson right now, you saw, uh, there's a lot of their equipment part, all of their whole mailers houses. And there's your apartment, they got the pipes cut out and they got the, all the vehicles lined up. So the, the neighbors are upset.
Okay, if you can give me the names of the streets, we can have a conversation with, uh, with the director of PPW and we can convey that to PSC as well.
Thank you. We go to Councilor Depple and then to Councilor Cruz.
Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
Um, I, I just want to speak to this amendment and say, I have heard you, Mr. Cruz, that we do get a lot of grants for mental health services and we do get several ones for our infrastructure, our roadways. But I want to refocus this back on the mission of decriminalizing legalized cannabis. As advocate for over ten years, this fight has always been about social justice and equity for the people that have been directly impacted by frequent cannabis laws. So I would prefer for many of, I think, all of the special community who were incarcerated and received, um, records behind this earth, for us to allocate them into various reentry programs, fairer people, housing, employment and job training, education, vocational training, sustainable communities, things like that, which is the thing that I already look at in federal, needs to sell things illegally to the purchases. So I would say I would urge council to focus more on those things. That's why this happened in the first place. Um, we get billions of dollars, as you said, Mr. Cruz, for these other areas. So I think that the money will be well served in this area. Hiring people with records or people who now that have records haven't been slugged because of this. Hiring the city hall, we have a large municipal break in the city and people are in the liberal reach jobs. So I would love to see a greater portion of this revenue going towards reentry programs for, for jobs and education and housing. So, and childcare is, that's a huge portion of the life of this budget is childcare. It's going to store bottles, makes people want to go out there and buy things and not just like how we do it. So, um, I would encourage a look at that. And I would say let's consider, um, give this one more time to sort this out as well because we aren't producing any revenue from cannabis right now. Those who approved a couple of businesses in the city that are not have been run yet, we've only got a couple of licenses and things like that. So we, we aren't able to, you know, specifically say this is how much we are going to be bringing in, which is how much we could allocate to this, that, and third. But I think that, um, taking this out as the recognition of Mr. Chuck Latton, who is a charlatan, became a community acting recognition, to give him more time, he said, to sort this out and see if we can allocate these funds so that it's going to the right business for the record. And not to say that the mental health services is in the market as well, but we do get a lot of money for that from other sources.
Thank you, Councilor. Now I can form a little team as. Um, in my conversation actually with Mr. Latton, he was fully supportive of dedicating some of this portion to mental health. That would be based on what Mr. Cruz said, I would be happy to, uh, adapt or edit my amendment to make it over twenty-five percent and all of all revenue collected to go towards mental health for a little bit. Um, I still have a lot of concerns about the trains and we need to find a way to fund the money for that, the money we have. Uh, that would be a separate issue for a separate day. But I would like to also say, um, the basis of all our lives is on mental health. And that is something that is important for all the issues that I have, I've just addressed and I fully agree with her. We do not simply have enough mental health counseling this year. We don't have enough people being reached out to so they can have mental health, particularly, uh, after terrible events occur, that life changes occur, trauma, trauma that happens to our youth, to our elderly in between. And the goal of this idea is not only one, um, other places understand as well this stuff is an issue. And I think it's something here, obviously, what we have, it's not adequate. We need to change the game when it comes to mental health. And I think this is a way to change that by giving our health and services more resources. And even if it is only, uh, twenty-five percent of the two percent tax, I think that's effective a lot, that would be a lot of good. Um, and a lot of us can really benefit from this across town.
Thank you, Madam President.
Madam President, there's no other discussion. I think I can propose a kind of procedure for it at this point.
Please.
Um, the first step I believe should be if Councilwoman Williams could restate now for the record what the precise proposed amendment to the ordinance is. Um, we can hold the council on the proposed amendment and then from there we can vote on the introduction of the ordinance and the law.
Thank you, sir.
So, uh, now the ordinance is coordinating for section forty-eight, seven dash two-six dedication. It's a further, the remaining one quarter, running six point five percent of all revenue collected through chapter forty, seven, article seven, cannabis transfer class. And one quarter, running sixty-two-five percent of all revenue collected through chapter one-four-six, cannabis businesses shall be dedicated toward health services for the city of Trenton Department of Health and Services and the city of Trenton Department of Health and Services. And that's it.
Can, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve the amendment as amended?
Madam Motion to approve.
So, sir. Councilwoman Lewis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisian?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Kirk.
Yes.
That was for the amendment. I hope it's in this, and Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve the.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kirk, I, I'm very tired, non-substantive amendment, said I'd like to make for the record before it's introduced. Uh, the first is on page six. Uh, it is under the definition of expanded upper and treatment center or expanded AC. I won't even read the entire, uh, the entire definition there, but it's just a cross-reference, um, that I overlooked when I amended the ordinance. So the last, very last cross-reference there, the definition should read section one, one forty-six dash fifty-one G.
That's one sentence. Okay, and to be clear, it's fifty, parenthesis, one, parenthesis. Okay, um, one, sorry.
Yeah, again, not so, not at all, but in section one forty-six dash forty-seven, um, there's a line that is pursuant to, three lines down, pursuant to CAC regulations as part of the state license application, dot, dot, dot. That was just a title that should be pursuant to CRC as opposed to CAC.
And so I would consider, um, I would, I would ask for a motion to approve, okay, for this, motion to approve the amendment, so has the motion to amend as well. All right, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve the amendment.
Madam Motion to approve.
Very good.
Councilwoman Lewis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisian?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Kirk?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn. At this time, if we may ask for, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve the introduction as an amendment.
Madam Motion to approve, as, um, introduces the amendment.
So, I agree.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lewis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisian?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Kirk?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn. Moving on to ordinance twenty-three dash zero four-nine, ordinance amendments, supplemental sections two forty-eight, eight, dash, eight D of the City of Trenton City Code relative to the time placement of garbage and trash containers for pickup.
You have a motion, so hold on a second.
Councilwoman Lewis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisian?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Kirk?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn. Ordinance twenty-three dash zero five zero, ordinance to release, vacate, and extinguish any and all public rights in and to the remaining portion of Baker Avenue.
Madam Motion.
So, hold on.
Sir.
Roll call, Councilwoman Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisian?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Kirk?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn. Ordinance twenty-three dash zero five one, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property identified on the city tax map of sixty-three to sixty-five those police hours, block one oh three oh eight, blocks twenty-eight and twenty-nine, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, home twelve, dash thirteen, D five, to Tanisha Ruffin for the sum of two thousand eighty dollars.
Madam Motion, so hold on a second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Lewis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisian?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Kirk?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn. Ordinance twenty-three dash zero five two, ordinance amended and supplemented chapter two, article fourteen, boards, bodies, and commissions of Trenton City Code to renew and amend cultural resources, cultural resources council to the multicultural heritage.
Madam Motion, so hold on a second.
Can move on, sorry. Thank you, Madam President. Councilwoman Lewis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisian?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Cadiz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Kirk?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-three dash zero five three, ordinance in continuing certain positions, fixing salary ranges, therefore, and setting for certain regulations for the implementation of these ranges.
No motion, so, second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Lewis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Cadiz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison? I'm sorry, yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Kirk?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-three dash zero five four, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property identified on the city tax map as five twenty-eight, Lamberton Street, block one oh three oh eight, block thirteen, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve, dash thirteen, five, to Colke, Nolan, for the sum of two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
No motion, so, second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Lewis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Cadiz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Kirk?
Yes.
Carried. Ordinance twenty-three dash zero five five, ordinance amendment in chapter forty-two of Code of City of Trenton to adjust construction and inspection fees.
No motion, so, second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Lewis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Cadiz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Kirk?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-three dash zero five six, ordinance establishing amendment salaries compensation by Trenton City Council.
No motion, so, second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Lewis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Cadiz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Hmm, I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna say.
Noted. Councilwoman Harrison?
No.
Noted, Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kirk, okay, Council President Kirk?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-three dash zero five seven, ordinance amendment supplement in terms municipal action eight three sixteen, goes to Councilor two P.
So, clarification, this is the document, is that good?
Sorry.
Is that good?
It's not good.
Yes. Anyone may comment before we begin. Let, let's, no motion, no motion please.
So, second.
Is there any special?
Um, Madam?
Councilwoman Williams?
Um, I do have a question from Mr. Lewis here. Um, Mr. Lewis, how many years has that document have some data to do?
Uh, well, we were asked to, well, certainly, to make sure we're not, and we did find out that, um, we were, this is a document review that is as recent as two thousand eighteen.
So it was not done under this thing?
Well, I would know was that during, uh, at the time, uh, twenty eighteen, and that was at the time, or they would say, uh, a clerk that was in an assault basis at that time, which is keeper of arrest. Who was on one seat, possibly, or another.
So, back when, like, President is, uh, going out to the Capitol was, uh, Council President, there was a document that happened?
I couldn't tell you because I wasn't here, but to my knowledge, the addition of the ordinance, ordinances themselves, for this purpose, to outline the document review would have to have twenty eighteen.
No, no, no?
Yes.
So, to, to this point, document review, for my understanding, has always been present. It was, it was, it was a part of the process. In September twenty eighteen, the council changed the portion of document review that gave Council President the authority to pull whatever she or he wanted to pull from the document. Um, and, and that was the amendment that was made to that at time. There was then another amendment that was made in twenty nineteen, I think, um, that dealt with, I can't remember off the top of my head, I have a copy of it. Um, orders actually, um, pulled it, it sent to children was eighteen dash forty-two because it was not available online. There was a minor change in that there. And then we amended it in twenty twenty-three, where we took the sole power of the president to be able to pull things at his own discretion and made it so that, um, the council president, oh, no, the law form, that's what, so that the council president could either deny a law form, or if by majority vote, council vice president had the law form, we allowed that to happen. So those would be amendments that have been made, as, as I recall, the per, the procedure, when I understand the document review existed back when, when Miss Penny Carter was up in there. And Anthony Conley.
Thank you. Any comments?
So I, so, one of the things that, uh, that stresses me, they, uh, the idea that anyone could take away the resolution, uh, that's on the, on the document. And that's what I'm confused as to what this current resolution will do or not, and the ability of a third person is in the room of their council, that that person actually had the, the power to also pull anything off the document. Um, my belief is, once something's on the agenda, they'll, they should pull it up, tap off. And that's what I'm confused, what this resolution will allow or not allow to some question to the other, that, uh, if someone wants to wait on it, or really can't find two on set at the time, um, of the, what actually happens? Because this is a question I found on my, asking Mr. Colosseum, uh, and our city of all departments, and in some states, and it's happening in class, where in, like, New York, Carolina, I believe, when a legislature is in session and one party in that legislature does not want to participate, uh, and the bill tries to stop them, basically, filibuster, they will actually leave the Capitol bill, and they will leave the state, and it's all in another state. It happens out in Kansas, Missouri, uh, Carolina, in other states. Uh, we cannot legally, and we tell, when council president and council vice president who attend meeting, is that correct?
Well, you're absolutely correct. There's nothing in terms of the penalty, if I can, today, the council president and the vice president didn't appear, and you won't have a council here. There's nothing in here that addresses what happens and what created it. And I don't anticipate it to have occurred, in a certain way, or, 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 put it out on our, on your surface.
Madam President? I'll see if I can, um, let's, let's, um, 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 um.
Um, I just wanted to add, some gave a question to Councilwoman Lewis. Um, this ordinance isn't about getting the third council member or one veto power or the authority over document review. This was, um, to council president's point, uh, inviting the third member in, so that it all happened, and we could participate and learn, and so that when, when we change leadership, vice president, president, as we go along, people will come in with that experience, uh, before then, and they won't go in there, you know, just, just learning for the first time, so that we have continuity. Um, secondly, is to, uh, define what the president and vice president should be doing, and is promoting collaboration in our leadership on council. And, uh, we don't really have the final goal for what the president's responsible for, what the vice president's responsible for, or what they're supposed to go into electing who on our council. So this was just to the effect that whether it's like, or anything like that, or if we have managed to get additional members on council in its power or document review, this was simply to simply collaborate on leadership, define what's responsible, what's responsible for the vice president and president to gather. And I was just thinking this conversation, um, about their roles and needs individually too, because we have not combined that since we've been here. Um, I think the main focus was on undoing some of the predatory, disorder, things that our predecessors had done over the years, and promoting, like, as I mentioned, uh, it's just, let's define what those roles and responsibilities are, individually, collectively, and also opening the door for better council members to be involved.
Can we, um, 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 uh, let Councilwoman Gonzalez and then, um, Mr. Colosseum?
It's nice and quick, it was just going to be to, uh, Councilwoman Lewis, front point, as you stated, that, um, we don't really have a defined what, what our roles, the roles of a president and vice president are, so why would, I would say, suggest that we define those before even, so that we can have a definition for every part of the role of the president and vice president, not just document review, just across the board as a council of course. I would think, I would suggest that we could do that first, before even changing one aspect of their roles in president and vice president, as, as it goes to the document review. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Colosseum?
I just wanted to point out, uh, to Councilwoman Edwards, that the way this ordinance is drafted, this underwears a number of provisions. This gives the president, the vice president, or the council, doesn't need the power that you could climb ahead or, so even the council doesn't need, would have that authority under this, the way it's drafted.
The master says, not the third person has the room, but if they, in the event of any circumstances, can be, they have the authority to appoint one of us to put in their place, and then that, whether it's for the, if we have that word, that's what we, that's what that says, that's what it means.
Um, I just wanted to add that I do agree, um, in part with Councilwoman Williams's point about, um, the CDP and the CDP, or anybody else having the power to veto on something going on in document, that should, um, go to council and allow us to just, you know, vote or not vote on whatever's coming to council. I understand that the, um, the provision that was in the amendment was made allowing for a vote of councils, you know, allow all, a walk-on, but that's something different, um, than actually having the opportunity to veto, um, what is coming to our council as put forth, admitted by the administration. We should all have the right to see everything being proposed by administration, unless there is some specific issue with it that needs to be fixed, illegal, um, has determined that, you know, something is crucially wrong. Um, second, I just wanted to say that, you know, our council vice president serves best second to our president. I would be much more comfortable knowing that my CDP is in these meetings with my council president, so that we have force of bodies, we have two brains, we have, um, you know, conversations with one another, so that we have clear communication, where one communication can be skewed, or, you know, another one presents it, and we know more so what's going on. Should we continue to have document review moving forward? Quite frankly, I don't see the need for document review at all. I think that all council members should just receive the document, um, we should be able to review it, and we bring our concern before, ask the questions, and then become the board council. Um, that's what I'm saying, and I think it's true.
Um, you know, Council President?
Council Vice President? Um, to, to the points I had in there, to the Councilwoman, to the balance point about the rules of council, so in looking at state session, NJSA, right, looking, it does say that the council can create their own rules of how the body will function, so to your point there today. The piece about the document review, the reason why we're hitting it now is because we've been doing document review this whole time, and document review is going to be a continued function that is happening, that possibly should happen. Um, and so it's important to address that because it should be done collaboratively with the leadership of council. Um, people should be able to, to meet each other where they are and have a conversation of saying, here is the day and time, does this work? And then find it and make it work, which is why I am the part about, it can be done virtually if that's the case where it just doesn't match. Um, currently, it's written that it is driven by the council president. And this is no disrespect to the president in position and title, however, if the president decides, I don't want you to be president. That disrespects the vice president in that title, and in these council meetings. If the president is not here, it is the vice president that will sit in and run the meeting. How do you effectively run the meeting if you don't know what has been discussed in document review because you are not president? I have been a strong VP to know that the change she suggested, council president, excuse me, your point of looking to have other people sitting on the meeting to learn, I said this the other night, I'm an educator, I do believe in educating people, people having the opportunity to participate in the process. But I also believe that both leaders should be present in the process, because it is the council president and vice president that helps move things forward through the council, each in different capacities, each in, in a different facet. Um, and so that's why this was, this was here. To Councilwoman Williams' part about being able to strike something from the document at will, let's say, it does say here that if there is something, if there's obtaining necessary additional information or documentation that is needed, I would be very lenient and right, right, having been audited, heard, made before, and I am lenient, um, at times. I even thought about saying that a written narrative would be given to council to explain why something was taken, right, and what was being waited for from the administration, so that way everybody is clear about what is happening. Um, I believe that it should be a collaborative process. I believe that it will help everyone moving forward in the process by us establishing this, and it levels the playing field, and it keeps us in a place where we all said, when we ran, we wanted to make, working together in the best interest of the people in the city of Trenton. The only reason that this was termed a walk-on was because it was produced after document review had taken place. However, every council member had a copy of this prior to our first meeting on today, so it wasn't like this was something that was thrown anyone, um, out of the blue. It just was termed a walk-on because it had been after document review. Again, I feel collaborative, collaboration and working, I think that collectively, we worked very well together. I do believe all of our hearts are in the right place when it comes to working for the betterment of the city of Trenton. I do believe that this is just a piece that needs to be ironed out, so that way everybody, everybody is moving, and it moves in the right way. Thank you.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Um, my take on this is the council president, vice president should have went to the conference room and just worked this out. Um, they simply didn't come out there in public. I think, um, sit down, find a common ground, and move forward from there. I just hope that we can move forward from this. I do not want to see that this causes any kind of rift, um, people vote one way or another, I don't want to see that. I want us to work for the betterment of the people of this great city, so however this turns out, I think we should do that. Had been over, we could just, went in that room there, just put our heads together, figure that out. I think it should be, between the council president and vice president, and they could have found some kind of common ground, instead of now, we're having to vote on this.
Council President Lewis, one for them. Yes, ma'am.
As one more question, I do agree that the vice president and president should be present at document review. I totally agree with that. I'm just saying, there's a structure, um, just like in a school, you have a principal, you have a vice minister, we should be working together. However, I think we should just, uh, define those responsibilities and respect the roles of each person as president and vice president.
So, full transparent, so, can you have? Full transparent, so, everyone understands there's a lot going on here, um, getting it to this. There was a discussion where, as Islam stands, the president and the vice president are the only two that go into document review with members of the administration. I made a suggestion that we add some of the other members of council, with the exception of Councilwoman Harrison, which I had a discussion about, because right now, we only pay, there are only three of the seven members here that have any idea. that have any idea what Dr. Review is all about. That would be myself, Council Vice President, Bruce Young, and Councilwoman Harrison. Sitting in the seat of President, I thought that we could propose a leadership to make sure that everyone knew what was going on in Dr. Review. In less than four months, we will be switching guards here. There'll be a new Vice President, there'll be a new, uh, Vice President, and there are four members who have no idea what it means to be a Dr. Review. Because of that, I made a suggestion that we add, not take anyone else away. Council President, Council Vice President, we add the other four members of Council, one at a time, to come into the rooms for Dr. Review. That's where this discussion is all set in. And of course, everyone has not communicated with me. There are mixed messages. I, my suggestion from the start has been, Council President, Council Vice President, and we add one member, each one that has not had the opportunity to sit in on Dr. Review, to all sit in. So when we change seats and a President is elected and a Vice President is elected, they now have at least an idea of what goes on in those meetings. That's where this all is set in from. Um, and this, I just wanted to read a little something on here. So it was not to take away, it was to add, to make sure everyone is well versed in what's going on in Dr. Review. So for full transparency and clarification, Dr. Review is part of a process to ensure we have crossed every team and dotted every honor, which I am still in favor of, prior to bringing those Council. This works because we can get questions answered or access missing information quickly. As I say from the past Tuesday, Dr. Review is the President's meeting, part of the responsibility that you're entrusted, that positioned with upon the election ballot. And I take that very seriously. This meeting should remain the President's meeting and we should not attempt to create a co-contribution, paradigm number two P. The crisis, the Vice President's role is to assist the President, which is how it has been working. To change Dr. Review now from being the President's meeting to being a President and Vice President meeting is unprecedented. We are not a lead club in our program. We are attracted by the law with rules in place to keep order. I have just, I have just under four months remaining this evening. It is my heart's desire to leave this seat in a better condition than when I received it. One of the authorities belongs to the presidency to be irresponsible and set us back by forcing the President to get permission from the Vice President in order to conduct the President's meeting. If we are to work together, then let's do that. And have the tools that we are all guided by acquired of all. We can only move and exceed the trust, the trust that I will always have this Council, have this Council's back and I'll see its best interest in heart. Common courtesy is only common if you are all giving. Pulling items to the docket is not an issue at all. It's primarily with docked items are pulled and usually our attorneys for departments that are doing that. I don't think we've ever pulled a docket from President or Vice President since I've been on the board. So that's, that was, um, on Council. Walk-ons, ninety-five percent of the time are allowed. So it wasn't about that and it's merely, this is merely about, um, what a party. And that's my opinion just. Anyone else?
Council President.
Yes, ma'am.
I was getting deliberate in what you said, but particularly because you said in full transparency. So in full transparency. And to Councilwoman Harrison's point, a conversation should have been had, should have been had. However, here is the full transparency. Day of the last Dr. Review, and I've been attending every Dr. Review since February when I first sent an email to you and Mr. Garcia asking that I do be present at Dr. Review. Um, and at the time, be made to two thirty because I could come straight when I got out of school and reply, yes, that would be great, we should definitely be there at that time at work, at this memorial class. We met, we were going Dr. Review. Now, the last Dr. Review, the day of the Dr. Review, I did the meeting invite for Mr. Garcia saying that the time is now to change to one o'clock. And I said, I write back and I said, is this the right time? Um, normally we leave at two thirty. Mr. Garcia didn't answer me right away, I wrote back, is this the right time? So I have to change my medical appointments to be present. Mr. Garcia wrote back and said, yes, Council President sent me a message twenty minutes ago saying that the time is now one o'clock. So I'm here for the meeting, we came into the room. Colin was in the room, Ray was in the room, and I was in the room, yeah. And I agreed with Colin and everything, I said, excuse me? Yes. I said, for future reference, if you're gonna change the time of Dr. Review, please at least give twenty-four hours notice. You said, well, I just found out what I had to do not too long ago. I sent Mr. Garcia the notice to make the time. And also, this would be changed if I'm making to Dr. Review and I've already started, um, content and communicating with other Council members about this. So now we begin Dr. Review. Now, to that, okay, so now we begin Dr. Review. He said, you had a two o'clock hard stop, you were low. We finished around one forty P M. You were like, this is great, Mr. Garcia, can I have you here for a moment? I stood and I said, excuse me? Yes. Can we discuss the changes that you're looking to do for Dr. Review? Mr. Garcia was standing there and heard me asking this. You said, I need to talk to him right now. We can talk about this later. You didn't say after five o'clock. You said, we can talk about this later. He was like, I'm not going to work. You said, later. People seem to know, oh, like I said to you, I can't do the one o'clock. I'm there being in school. And you said, well, that time comes to me, my son started school, my son started school, has something to one o'clock. You and Mr. Garcia walked out, you didn't let it. After you said, we can discuss this later, you went over to balance your back. I didn't hear anything from you. We hadn't spoken about it. And then I hear that you said that I had called you back from a message that you made about Fodder's events and the Huns and Socks. You called, but then you text right after it to all of us saying, I called and text you all, I'm gonna let you know about this event, the Huns and Socks where you're involved, I bring them all in and give you to them the ones you have for Council. But you never, anytime I said, Council Vice President, I never talked to you about something. You never said, Council Vice President, there's some changes to Dr. Review that I would like to discuss with you. You never did that. And you showed me the Fodder's events event and you walked past and you saw you're sitting at the time, and in the car with your brother. And you went over to Jackson and y'all started hearing about the Socks. And so with that, I believe it's fair to everyone. I don't believe in dictatorship. I don't believe in one-sided situations. I believe in working together and I do believe in respect. There were, there were emails, there's emails. Where Councilwoman Ellis said that you even said to her, that you didn't talk to me. You weren't going to. I didn't call you, you tried to call you, you said we'd talk about it later. I think that this is necessary just to, just to make sure that everybody has a fair shot, to just make sure that everybody has a seat at the table in that for every reason. No one is disrespected or counted out just because someone just decided in that moment that that's what they wanted to do. I'm sorry that everybody had to hear this, but it is what it is. And this, and this is where we are. And that's why we cooperate, put it together for fairness. So we don't have what we had four years ago. So we do move forward together. Um, and this is a collateral to the peace and help make it happen and fairness for everyone requires a full sit in the seat. Possible it is. It will be fair and it will be encompassing of those that will need to be present. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask if we can table this into a discussion. Can we have, um, I'm not for every year, uh, during the ondate. I believe that this is a discussion that should be discussed with myself and the Vice President in a private room. And until we can do that, this, I'm asking for a motion to table this ordinance.
Council President, are you making the motion?
Yes, I am.
Is there a second? There's a second overall. Councilwoman Edwards.
If we table it, we didn't have another one, right? These can't stay long.
You can have a motion to table it, unless you table it to a specific.
We table it, my motion is tabled for discussion as we have, okay, come, I'll, I'll make it myself. That is my motion.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Bruce Young.
I'd like to define what the, to a specific time.
That's cool, I know.
I mean, we have, we do sort of the exact way. Table it to a certain time.
We don't know. We're gonna do a specific time, that means you and I are gonna have a discussion prior to walking back into this room.
We can go talk for the next minute.
Yeah, that discussion. Yes, sir.
You do a word for this meeting. Is this meeting here now? Cause I, I would want that to be spoken counter. I don't want this counter to be spoken. That last Council, I want to have a ten inch marker. Don't want that to be spoken. Please, let's work it out. We will be able to.
Perdue me, I'm only, there is a motion on the floor for a motion to table. There's no specific thing associated with that motion at this time. It just goes for the role for this purpose and if somebody has a motion there afterwards or unless this motion passes. Um, the motions to table, uh, Councilwoman Bruce Young, would you vote?
No.
No, if Councilwoman Figaro can't vote.
No.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President, please.
Yes.
A motion, yes. Madam Speaker. As President, it's in honor, we are at, we are preaching public comment. I see, uh, twelve members, uh, twelve individuals, this is public members of the public, they're just speaking. Um, this is for the public. Public comments will be five minutes, take five minutes for each individual. And just so you understand, the Council is not the one.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here, Eric Jack, Alpha K three seven, I love having you. Um, I first, I wanna, uh, express my appreciation to the Council for getting a lot of work done this year. Uh, hope that keeps going. I also wanna thank them for, specifically for the treasure that was passed tonight. Cause I believe that was brought up when we asked that that are new. I'm representing, uh, New East Ward Community Association, which was founded, uh, on January first, um, after, uh, we decided to change the Villa Park Civic Association at the closure of St. Francis and look at that transition, um, in our economic base there. It's right in the center of the East Ward and, uh, we, it's, it's part of Civic Association. We've been trying to get more people involved in civic affairs. Um, uh, while I am here actually to, uh, say something about, uh, the, it was Resolutions twenty-three, three ninety-seven, ninety-eight, uh, consent agenda that were passed today, uh, for economic development, uh, programs. And, um, at last night's meeting of Nuda, uh, I presented the, I showed the, uh, development plan for the city and showed that, uh, in, in all of the, in the two fifty plan and the other redevelopment, that basically the East Ward has been considered, uh, stable. Uh, and with the laws of St. Francis, it has been destabilized. So one of our primary goals at the New East Ward Community Association, uh, has been to partner with Capital Health, who was, uh, they agreed back in December after the sale, uh, to help us organize the ward, possibly put together a C D C and try to create a lot more civic involvement, um, with the community and with, uh, looking at plans for our road. Um, I'm also representing St. Michael's Church, we're a program director. And, um, it, it, uh, we are a partner, I just completed for a grant, partnering with T C C A, uh, the Twelve Steps and More Bookstore. And T C C A will be sponsoring, uh, sort of in, in the Twelve Step tradition, a speaker jam, uh, in which we are planning on inviting, uh, some of the top specialists in the region, uh, professors from Penn, from Blaustein School, from, uh, Princeton. I mean, we have the top people in the country to talk about, uh, recovery training. And the goal is to have three speakers a night along with music and vendors, which we've been doing, uh, for our salons. And one of the goals there at St. Michael's agenda is to start moving academic and talks into our center city, uh, where the, uh, one twenty Sixth Street will be a perfect venue for academics, uh, to start building attendance, a place to, to meet and join and, um, that, that's also part of redevelopment thoughts. Um, in any case, uh, last night's meeting, uh, I presented, uh, both the, uh, different pieces of the, uh, the two fifty plan, where it spoke about the East Ward development and whatever. The goal was is, is, um, to partner with Capital Health and expand what we were proposing in this small brand that St. St. Michael's put out. But to look for a year-long, um, sort of educational project. And, uh, that's, uh, why I wanted to bring that to your attention here because you could help us do that. And we're hoping to reach out to C, to, uh, C C O C and where you're training and whatever to see, uh, if we can get some real good money. For a few bucks, uh, we can get the best in the country for a hundred and fifty dollars a night. So.
Thank you, that's a fine, thank you very much.
Lee in the room. Good evening, Councilman Lee, we're one of two brown streets in New Jersey. I gotta do quick, I only got five minutes. Uh, on the issue of the Vice President and the President.
Yes, sir.
Y'all need to squash that because I'm the Vice President of my unit. Eighteen, five forty for New Year to be transferred. I got over three hundred members underneath that I have to take care of. I respect my President, Kitty White Senior. He has the position of going to the governor, going to the President, going to any other state. going to any other state, trying to rally support for our members. And I let him do that. And his actions, he appoints me to do those things. So I say unnameable to a call. If y'all want to do this with adding the Vice President to the, uh, document review, allow every member access, because y'all all equal. There's no one higher than the other in this protocol. Don't let just one member be available. If two members are going to come to that document review, welcome them in. Welcome them in, it's three, one count, welcome them in. That way, everybody's on the same page. We don't have that. I say unnameable to Vice President. So please, respect the positions that you have, and also respect the positions that your other members have. Give them the same opportunities, because you gotta remember, some of y'all are up for reelection next year. So I'm only getting a two-year term, not a four-year term. So the ones that are up for the two-year term, need to get in there as quick as possible to learn what they need to learn. So squash all that. And let everybody have access if they feel welcome. If they don't feel welcome, they can stay out. They're all welcome, let them in there. My second issue is, I got a call that city members, city council members want cards. Please don't do that. Please don't do that. You already asked for a raise, and they're getting off us a year. And now you want cards? Please do not let me see that on the ballot. Please, yeah, please don't let me see that on the ballot. I'll be standing outside protesting. All right, I guess don't do that. Please don't let me. The third issue is Saturday, I was at the, um, Tri-Pire Department's, uh, back school, uh, agenda, uh, pocket box department. I've supported the fire department over fifteen years. Engine eight. Especially because they took care of my mother when she was alive. They saved my mother's life a lot. And a lot of the firemen were disgruntled, and they said the mayor took an expired captain's promotion list, reactivated, and passed over guys that was already active for this. Is there any truth to that? Can you find out? Can you ask the city clerk, give me any information on that? I can come down to his office, and I'll, I'll see about it. But if they did, then that is wrong, because those guys, they put their life on the line. They studied, they pounded, pounded, ready, to try to get these promotions to better themselves. And I'm gonna say, they passed over my kind to other guy. And they feel hurt and slighted, that they put in all that work just to be pushed aside. And they were, they were up for these promotions. So please, um, if that's, if you can get me that information, if the people that I will.
You know, I have a question.
Uh, do that tomorrow, if the guys whose parents owe for it. Because, um, I'm always going to support the fire department in this city, because them guys, excuse my French, hell, damn.
Nah, man.
I'll do better than that. If you don't say that. And, um, also, Ken, um, Jen, I was talking with, um, John, my neighbor, and he said that you're going to have a meeting with him. When you have that meeting with him, when you're on his back porch working at my back porch, make sure, like, to knock on the door and get invited to that meeting, because there's a lot of issues that need to be addressed in that part, uh, Franklin Park.
I did, I did, I did, I was all the time, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief counsel. Do we want a Brittany Paul?
Hello, hello. Um, I just want to say thank you, I, I know it's not easy, the job you all have to do. Um, and to the President, it was nice meeting you very, very good with the others. And to your boy, you'll be a P L, of course, and everything you do, so. Um, but I thought it was important to be here and just provide, um, just some comments on an experience I had recently. Um, but just as a background, I'm from Brittany Paulner. I'm connected to Trenton, uh, because of my grandmother, who actually migrated here from Georgia, um, was a sheriff. She followed her sister by my grace, who also passed away not too long ago. Um, about thirty years ago. They bought houses in the North Ford, and for years, they were fighting, um, to be really treated fair, protected, um, and cared for. Uh, I was here every summer, rung up, um, weekends, holidays, visiting my family. So, uh, we had a lot of roots here, and now I'm here. Um, after going to school and learning a lot, I'm back in Trenton, and I'm happy to be here. Um, but recently, we went to a meeting. We received a letter, uh, we had my home to go to work. My dada passed her, um, condo down to my sister and I. And we received a letter about the Donovan Homes Choice Program that, um, they're trying to go and get a break for, right? Um, we weren't really made aware, and then, um, given a lot of information about it, about the surrounding area, uh, which we're a part of. Um, so we went to the meeting, and, um, and a lot of the, a lot of the issues that came about is the way they have a meeting in the letter. Um, they mentioned eminent domain and things like that. So of course legally, they have to say exactly what their plan and what their plan is to do, but also to talk about mental health and being, um, not served. Using language like that in rural communities can cause a lot of damage, especially for people who are not unified, about the plan until they receive that letter. So we went to the meeting, um, and they voiced our concerns. Um, and a lot of the homeowners were, were saying they were going to come to the meeting, and propose it to the council to get approved, and that process, whatever it's like. Uh, but they were also kind of left in the dark about what's going to happen. Do we know if you're going to exercise the power of eminent domain? Or they couldn't really answer that, right? Um, and to be very transparent, my grandmother's property, which is across the street from Donovan Homes, was in the gray area, uh, which means, you know, they're not going to exercise that or the property looks okay enough, or they don't see any issues. So I want to make it very clear, they weren't saying they're going to just take people's property. That's not what they're saying. And the letter was legally stated that way. But I think it's important when we talk about redevelopment, especially in Trenton, right? Especially in North Ford, um, that we really consider the voices of people in this surrounding area. And to give people a letter that end of August, saying you're going to propose it to the council by October to me, is not really being transparent with the community. Um, so that, that's an issue there. And then also, um, I'm learning Trenton politically and how things work. I'm still learning. And I know people haven't been doing this work forever, Trenton. Uh, so I'm not saying this is, this is like the work that has been done, um, and all the community work that has been done. But I feel like, um, you know, when we walk into this room, it's a different world than the Trenton, right? So people who have a heart are coming to this room. And a lot of times when we get into these meetings, they talk about resources. They talk about, we want to do something for the community. Uh, but there's not really anyone being a translator to say what a document is, or a constitution is, or how to even get on a program. Uh, so I am wondering for, for what the council can think about, specifically the North Ford, or if someone's already been doing it, please let me know. What does it look like to really, really start having dialogue with the community? If it's community meetings or whatever is going on. We're talking about resources for homeowners, so they just don't perceive one thing in the mail, and that's it, right? Because a lot of times, people look at it like, um, red tape, right? There's a lot of people in the neighborhood who are, they're not going to read through five pages of this and that. So I know my five minutes is up, but, um, I'm more so concerned about transparency. What does it look like to really start talking to the community? Um, so this new world, this road is not so foreign to the citizens of the North Ford.
Thank you for talking.
Yes, I'm personally in the West Street University. Uh, just switching up, actually, probably only a guest to me, probably about thirty to forty percent of people who's been at the podium since the beginning of this, uh, council, actually, they know four of us on the floor.
Oh, wow, yeah, I would love to be tried.
Well, not even, not even under this room, if ever seen one.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
So, um, people, a lot of people do know, um, and the votes are much more educated than it might seem. Uh, they may not know all of the process, and they're not happy to explain that.
Yeah.
Uh, but that's something, quite frankly, that we need to make sure that citizens know how government can help them. And so for the process part, that's important too. And the city does do a lot as far as advertising and trying to reach the young families through phone calls. We also have a really great information system where people can sign up to get, uh, emails and also phone calls from, um, the mayor's office and from natural resources. But our leadership department has access to it. It's a lot going on, I don't want you to go all the way to get that for business. We just probably need to show you where it's coming from.
Yeah, and I think it is.
I hear that from you.
Yeah, I'm sure it is, and, um, I just think, we can talk about making better ways to communicate with people who, um, aren't used to politics or even the way that typically we do communications. Thank you.
Always thinking of that.
Erica Little. Sean Ryan. Cordelia Seig.
Do you need to hear the speech, or the response?
Please do.
It's a hot mess outside, it's a hot mess in here.
Certainly.
Okay, um. I guess first thing I'll talk about, because it's always, you know, one of the things I'm a stickler about is the correctness of the outcome. And so while that's seen a lot of improvements in this last document, going with food, there's some things that are missing on the resolutions for this. The person who, um, submits this should always have their name and title. You have several here, they have signatures, I don't know if they are. And if people were to look for this label on here, to mark the signature, because they're not really real, they need to know the base of the title. So if you're looking for this, um, fifty-two, fifty-three. Fifty-two, fifty, fifty-three, and forty-nine. Also, the resolution from last week, I mean, from last week, which was twenty-three eighty-four, was the resolution for, um, authorizing the executive session. That didn't have, um, who submitted it, so just be sure that that's going to happen. You guys know what I'm talking about, it's the one hand, to always have the person's title. And I'm sure it'll be a long part, and concurrently. These are historical documents, even or not, and so everything should be as correct as it possibly can be. On ordinance twenty-three forty-nine, this is the one for, um, the pickup times for collection. If I would just ask, if the title, council considered changing it from pickup to collection time?
Okay.
The resolution, um, it's coming out, I don't know if it'll be here for the public hearing, if I am a marshal, that I'll speak to, and that has to do with the salary increase. So, let me just say, I think all people in the bedroom, just like Harry said earlier, you got a lot of done in the time that you've been here. Uh, enough for a ten thousand dollar raise, actually, you know. And I don't say, take it right, because I'm just a council person myself. We didn't get a raise at the time. Um, during my booth, we did, we got, uh, two, two years after. And that had been a lot of twenty years or something that happened. And our raise was a simple two thousand dollars, okay? Not ten. Thirty, to make thirty thousand dollars was a part-time job. Some of the employees here walking the city home don't make it when you're full-time. That's just my opinion. Um, you guys, who the salary was in the rand, and, you know, um, if you want to do something different and find a way to supplement it, but not through us, because I don't think I was able to handle another seventy thousand dollars in salary. Just on top of the salary that you give to your pay, part-time pay. Okay? There's a lot of money going on, and it's part-time employees, you don't have a whole business, correct?
No, no.
No benefit to the company?
No, no.
No, no?
No, yes.
Still, so this, okay, but still not. What I, when, um, the council, the clerk should have distributed to you was the ordinance sixteen fifty-one. Sixteen fifty-one was intended by the council in two thousand sixteen to give us a raise. If you take a look at it, eight, proposing, I think it's like twenty-five hundred dollars every year, depending on, even that, of course, there's more than that, you guys can observe it. But the point is, it is a lot to ask for, um, that enormous amount of money. You just got here, six months, eight months before, you know what I mean? It's just not any time. I don't even know if it was like, was, I don't know if you had a chance to take it, if that's, it's in, but thirty thousand dollars, like I said before, that is salary for full-time employees in the city hall. And it just doesn't sit well with you, that council members would ask such a disorderly amount of money, because it's such a short-term task. So I'm going to ask that you please not only reconsider, uh, when you look at the increase that you're asking for, but that you go back, and if you want to do something incremental maybe, take it up, but be sure to first prefer the, um, the, uh, finance also, and make sure the clerk office can support something like that. Last day, document review. So I heard about this one, I really wasn't going to speak on it tonight until, just, wow, it just kind of like took on a lightness of it. First of all, I was on council from two thousand two to two thousand eight. I will tell you that there's always been counter, a document review. Document review has always been the council president and council vice president. Some of these are that in council president's absence, the council president would be addressing. It is a shared leadership responsibility. No, everybody doesn't do it, because everybody's not a leadership, while all, all have one vote. It is very important to know that when you select the council president and vice president, you refer, you, um, you refer to them, the ability to make some decisions on your behalf. And the document review is ready to do that. Sometimes in illustration, you can do something that doesn't have all the information that is necessary or promise. You stop against tracks. You don't want to waste any of that time, especially in companies. And so that is why you have to show no discernment in what you do in document review, because your colleagues are depending on you, on your consent to get it done. Sometimes you have to make very good one right there. And so that is why I would support that council president, vice president were contained. And you can't, you need to learn to do that. You can't just be one person's calendar under, it needs to be, you got all this technology down here. You have a million, you can do it for one, um, function. But certainly, that is how that works, another person coming to you. I guess, you know, that's okay, we didn't have it, but you know, it's okay to do. But council president and vice president should always be in the, for document review. It has always been done, and I'm telling you, even before me, with council president with her, uh, took the time for any content, before him. Oh, that's my time. I'm down here, I'm here. I want you guys to, um, come get your way on this, because it is something that can really be worked out, you know? And try to sometimes be, sometimes you just want to get your story out. Sometimes you just got to find a way to try to keep it second. You don't really want to hear it. You always have to keep it positive, because that is the way to go right there. You know, don't make a second guess of a vote, because we're traumatized from the last council. Okay? So you don't, you know, save it, figure out a way. Text each other, you know, do the third, you can partner, a lot of the other is. But try to always remain in the team, and the, 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 the.
Thank you.
My name is Mark. I live in two sixty North Hill Street, apartment five four. And I like that this one is set to you folks, very smart. I've got to say that we got to work together. Got to dispute, separate. I just think he's right, Dr. Sourdine. You know, you got to prove yourself. You have to finish it wrong. You need to wait a little while and get more things done. As far as the counter standing, I disagree with him. It was a sixteen-year-old girl. She was allergic to milk. They said she was meant to be ill. They took off her milk in four days, and guess what? None to notice. They put it back on milk after four days, and guess what? None to notice. You got to look at these things and make sure that people, labels put on them, that think labels actually fit. Because there are too many people that are labeled little ill that are not meant to be ill. You got kids in school. And the high school children, they want to give them all dog and rid of them. That's not the answer. The answer is taking them off, the garbage, the sugar. It's causing more harm than cocaine in her, especially everybody. Elderly and young kids, babies in womb. And another thing I said to the bus driver, I said, what can you say? They said, oh, he said, tell her about Bailey Street off of Labor Street. Need to clean it up. So if we get our streets nice and laid, plant some trees, get the payments taken care of, we're going to have a great, great time in the city. There's a lot of things going on that are wrong in my life, family's life. But I'm not into that right now. My mind is on somebody that's very close to me, my sister. Y'all ever read it?
Thank you so much for the letter, Mark. Be gone.
Dana Harrison.
Good evening.
Good morning.
Wonderful.
I'm in the state house on the north door. And I'm also a homeowner, like she mentioned. And first of all, I have submitted a petition for speed homes on my block that runs with Gavin. Going to the parade, I have to get a ticket or something. And I dropped it on to Councilman Harrison. But I was putting his mailbox at the building that's the back street. Down, down the stair. And so I submitted that after anything happens back in June. And also, like the elderly woman mentioned about the homeowners not being notified as some changes that are happening in the neighborhood. I know all about the trend to fifty, read it twice. The issue that I have is the utility companies making changes to the meters. My order was legally turned off while I was out of town. For a few, and I come back to the door. I filed a complaint with the Public Utilities, which that's attached to all kinds of deals on Trenton's website. But they don't have restrictions on computers and supply that focus you there. Order placed there. They can't leave it now. The whole issue was they think we have a preparation for this, the bills, and, okay, fine. I have a problem with the water meter. I have a problem with coming into a respective meter. But I called up an opt-out and flew to water meters. I don't want my privacy to be invaded. I don't want any digital electricity water meters. I opt-out P S M G after several calls, complaints, or the Public Utilities and found it attacked my meter. I don't want any kind of electronic digital data collecting meters on my, that's electric. So I notified Michael at the Trenton Water Department. And he was in grave, and she started screaming at him before I got with the child. I'm like, okay, wait a minute, first time down. Second of all, I'm out of town. And I come back, I come to Trenton City Hall, which I did. I saw Andrew Bobbitt, Bobbitt, he got the number back. But we wasn't notified. So during my research, I realized that every county has a bill in place that they have to have a written consent from the homeowner to make changes to their house. Not commercial, not even Trenton doesn't have one. And that's my question. Like, if you want to just make changes and just set up appointments to come out and swap people's stuff out, notify. And then he's like, oh, who's your landlord? This master screen, I don't need it on the phone. All that was unnecessary. I'm like, you know, you could talk to me when I was screaming. Then Andrew Bobbitt gets him on the phone. He don't know I'm in the office, signature office, and he's screaming at Andrew. And Andrew had to say, oh, calm down, calm down, calm down. Why, you know, his ego was hurt because I filed a complaint with the Public Utilities. And then they said, yeah, you know, talking about they don't have jurisdiction over Trenton. Well, why is it going on the website? So they're not going to do anything, and they just want to pass it back now to the city. That makes it need to move. And we need to have our own bill and our own legislation that maybe homeowners require, right? Because they can come change out of people's electric meters and water meters. And I get out of it because somebody please tell me how to file a paper to opt-out and this order to change. Because nobody at Trenton can work so without. And I'm not going to let this go. So that's all that we had. Like, this is harassment. You see how many knows this? They had like ten times to come out to my house in three days, and you aren't Trenton Borough short-staffed for one person, or you serious? This is harassment. But I will continue. And like I said, we need to pass some kind of legislation or build our homeowners having rights. And not everybody in the city of Trenton is running. And you want to be notified when any change is coming to our property. That's it. That is, why can't we bring this in? Marsha County, motion county has a written consent order. Burlington County has one. Monmouth County has one. The Marsha County one. So you'll be hearing from me because I want somebody to show me how to park my opt-out and have my order changed for a better time here.
Thank you, sir.
This is Councilwoman Mary.
Yes, Councilwoman Mary. The town.
It's ours. Just wanted to, I just give you a little bit of information, a little background I'll give you too. The situation is in the, sorry, we're treating that. First of all, and second of all, regarding the speed bump. Unfortunately, our Public Works Department has a lot of applications to speed most around the city. So as of at least a month and a half ago, they were still trying to finish up application twenty twenty-one. So I wish I had better to make sure people can answer that, if they see the speed bumps soon. But they have to, they'll study everything, but it's going to be a while until they get these applications. So trust me, we want them to get there in a month or so.
Well, I just really wondered whether he conceded or not, because I didn't hear it. He told me personally, before I get to the end of the traffic, and I'll investigate that. I'll draft it tomorrow. Mr. Harrison, I'm sure he can turn that in for you.
Mr. Anthony Stintor, and Travis.
Okay, it's from June.
Yeah, yeah, of course. All the speed bump orders that I have, they go to Stintor. And he makes a determination, and he has a list of lives here, and he's still going down.
Thank you.
Steve, go ahead.
If you could, Steve, play, for example, the deckwork again for the council. First, I'd like to thank council for approving the Gant House meeting orders tonight. And particularly Councilman Ken Burton, because Willie was under the steering that had a lot of effect. But as we talked about at the last meeting, when this was introduced, it means nothing to the homeowners. And we know that Trenton really lacks in that area. And there's a huge cost to this lack, unfortunately. My priority is the animals, who pay the open price, and with their lives or with their well-being, physical and mental health. But there's a cost to the rest of the city as well. I'm going to try to give you some vague numbers. Unfortunately, the record community is pretty lax with the sheltering, the health department, actually getting the right to support this is not a struggle. But from what I can find, this year, Trenton licensed five hundred dogs. Last year was just seven hundred. They take in more dogs than that every year in the shelter that aren't licensed. Not if you go back home because they're almost wearing a tag. From the record, I have a whole package that came from the state that the shelters submit. Trenton Shelter takes in between five hundred to more than nine hundred dogs a year. That is two to five times as many dogs as Hamilton takes. Hamilton Shelter is twice as large as Trenton, so we, right off the bat, we're looking at it as a shelter, barely a quarter of the size of Shippensburg. But the enforcement piece, as far as it goes, the licensing. If we were to compare, in roughly the same population, obviously, I'm very dusty. If we were to just compare and assume they have roughly the same amount of dogs in Trenton, it's almost over thirty, they're just at twice or five or three. You're looking at anywhere from a thousand, easily, to four thousand dogs in Trenton that are not licensed, which means they're not vaccinated, which is a huge public risk. It's also, when you trip out that piece of state gets, that's almost twelve, ten to twelve dollars that the city gets for the license and this amount of four dollars. Not to mention the fees if they weren't enforced. This is partly without the self, of the self-control, animal control, and shelter for its own population. Not to mention the animal control issues. Hamilton has a fairly good meat length. You have twenty-five, thirty percent of dogs made back home, passed annual to the shelter. I can count on my fingers how many dogs they deserve to Trenton. But not licensed, nobody would, they are certainly not. The breeding waters will help because a lot of these dogs aren't actually bred. They're bred to the point they cannot really coach anyone with their own ministry. That's an additional cost to the city. State law means that if you go and they're brought to the shelter and cared for, four days, seven days, to observe for ages, which is obviously higher risk, mostly not vaccinated. And to help find the younger ones who exist wants to come forward. And then to be given, who don't do not want to treat the animals this way. We care for their feed, then we vaccinate them, and we try to find new roles. That's an additional cost. Your Public Works Shelter staff, your ACOs, people that don't know triple duty, people in their constant cleaning stage, the volunteers that come to help them. It's a huge cost for a complete lack of any enforcement at all, on any level. I over sometimes, Captain Wilson Police Department, because we know people call about these animals. And they wait out there in the rain and the snow, at night, places where nobody's really watching the video. But they're told somebody's coming, and they're like, oh, I hope that these calls are not making it to the animal control. They're not making it to where it's supposed to be. The helos that are supposed to come out there to help the animal, the calls are not coming. And when they do come, and I watch the bike, and I'm worried, and they're going to investigate, and they're hoping to wait. They walk to the front door, being pressed against, and they say, we definitely call, we heard there's dogs. They're told, my dog's coming. And they say, fine, run after us, and walk away, and never see the dog. They never see the dog, went to the station, and then we have videos of these dogs. Now they're barely able to walk, digging up, taking a drone back to our place, and there's nothing done about it. Breeding waters, I can only say this. Breeding waters is a great step, a great addition to existing laws that can prevent this and make Trenton, not just the animals, but the people who are affected as well, much look better if it's enforced. And I hope there's going to be some kind of effect. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Dana Stintor.
Good evening, Council President, Councilwoman, Administration. I dare you to agree with Trenton. My first point is to reiterate, as I mentioned earlier, that the number of citizens have on plan by some media entity. And I was about how they're talking when they call down to City Hall. I think it's a photo, they ask constituents to do part of the process. And they work the phone, they call, even when they come here, and they don't find a address. Rather, I feel, we act like, well, I can try to continue to move with the system, when the system really tells them where to head when they come down here. But it's fatigue, it's exhausting. And I would ask that you make sure the departments tighten up on the public service and help to talk to people decently. I said that a number of residents are now enjoying getting tickets at the night in front of their houses. I don't understand how that is occurring, and what are we trying to do in terms of law enforcement and the environment and community, where we're already in a vice of space. But I'm just wondering how that is happening again, if you speak, or if you deal with that, so to bring that to investigation. I guess my third last one is, I'm really fatigued with us constantly giving our allegiance to the recital in the reality where people aren't giving allegiance to us. Everyone now is taking photos, is racing off to the events. And I'm probably the individual that I'm asking, why do you keep of giving our allegiance to people who have presented platform to us? If he's going to be the new county executive, what is his platform? What is his policies in regards to issues like Trenton Community Training, Trenton Restoration? Who are dealing with issues to help resolve policy issues, safety issues? In this city, last, another night in Long Brown, Oakland Hall, another young black and brown, body of a brown, community traumatized, another chapter of that. And it's really limited funding for us to be working, but needs to be done. Most of our issues aren't law enforcement issues, but I don't hear anybody asking him that issue on that. What is his issue on education? We now have schools right now, amazing teachers, beautiful black and brown babies, are being asked in classrooms, the lawyer version. How can you teach and how can you learn in hell? And no one's saying a word. And not just Melody, it's the man Vincent. Where are all of our teachers? From the federal, state, and local, other, not saying anything about what's going on? This city is going to be redistrict, but nobody's talking about why that is occurring. It's occurring because we have more babies than we have students. We have a new high school, but we actually need another one right now, and probably two more schools. Councilor knows what I'm talking about. A lot, a lot of fourteen hundred students at that high school, we're already at seventeen hundred. With the majority of that being the dominant population of our Latino community, we have two problems. We have too many students, and now we have students with, we also have language issues. When we talk about the language, we always talk about students learning English. I'd like to learn Spanish so I can talk to my Latino communities more. So again, there's so much work to be done. I just think we're not talking about the last issue. We get on flow with this. We're moving towards a couple of elections, school board election. And again, we keep talking about the happily, and why people don't know. I would suggest that needs counsel. Most of the board people have to be reelected in a short time. Do community workshops, and allow them to come out, and connect with four churches, and each of the boards, and I can offer spaces for the public housing if you need that as well. And you can educate the community that there is an election coming up, and that they're voting, that they're voting for the council. And that they're not, people don't come because they don't believe in power. And if you don't educate them on the power, you will continue to carry the wheel of character in the entire city. I just think that would happen, and redemption and resurrection can't happen unless the people are involved. Thank you for listening.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Council President, Councilbody. Italian lunch, noon, two thirty, four hundred. In April of twenty eighteen, Trenton Police Dispatches Telaya Woods, Tahara Johnson Riley, and Shawnee Ingram were fired for abandoning their posts. The firing came after these three young black women reported that supervisor, many supervisors, Sergeant John Zappelli violated federal and state law to include the New Jersey Wage and Hour Act and Trenton Police Department's own collective bargaining agreements, as per the eighty-four-page complaint. Why was such a complaint lodged? Well, that was due to then-supervisor John Zappelli implementing a comp time program that violated the time, work, and labor policy for the dispatch communication unit. Once the three members decided to boycott the unfair adverse comp time policy, they were immediately harassed to what seems to have been retaliation for being leaders and inserting integrity in a space committed to subverting its own rules and regulations. But what makes this particular case so egregious is that Telaya Woods, Tahara Johnson Riley, and Shawnee Ingram were all fired for essentially whistleblowing, while the supervisor and Sergeant John Zappelli got while the supervisor and Sergeant John Zappelli got to retire with his full pension and a title of captain, despite being the leader of this illegal comp time policy. Now, I don't know if you are all aware or not, but we are currently in a political fight for reparations. And as such, this particular case screams systemic and adverse practices to include racial disparities that continue to play in this police department. The city of Trenton is about forty-nine percent populated by black people, yet our police department staffs less than thirty-eight percent. Now, I ask myself, how could this be when the city's white population is less than forty percent yet they make the majority of the staff at TPD in both rank and file? In addition to the obvious financial implications here, there are several penny losses against Trenton PD, to include two point nine million recently paid out in two different provinces. Not without you, but for me, that's a lot of money for a city that is trying to find its financial freedom. A lot of money to ask taxpayers to be okay with, and keep in mind that two point nine million is just for two cases with many more hitting against TPD. The purpose for being here tonight is to sound alarms and begin the redress process for these three women who were not only fired, but they were harassed and publicly humiliated. I am calling you all to stay true to your campaign promises and utilize your investigative abilities to find out what is going on down at TPD, so that we can stop the socioeconomic and political bleed on our Trenton residents and our pockets. Trenton residents like Telaya Woods, Shawna Ingram, and Tahara Riley, who, who just wanted to work and feed their families, but were fired instead. We cannot complain to our community, it needs to be better, while leadership remains committed to environments that support adverse, if not illegal, practices, policies, and procedures. In closing, I am not looking for culpability, but I am looking for those of us who call ourselves leaders to stop participating and practicing supremacist economic, social, and political norms in a city that is majority populated by black people. For when we make favorable conscious decisions that are Trenton resident focused, we unconsciously begin to tear down the walls of adverse historical practices that have been continued to cost us taxpayers money. Telaya Woods, Shawna Ingram, and Tahara, Tahara Johnson Riley.
Now, the president has told of a comment that I have, and you want to sit down?
Yes, please.
Certainly. Uh, so, starting with Councilwoman.
Speaking of, uh... Thank you all for being here and sitting in front of us, and it's a delightful night. I want to start off by, the, the first presentation that you guys put out to me tonight was the lack of a public budget presentation. And I want to implore the administration to do public budget meetings with the community. As it has been sometimes in the past, but that's something that I would like to see happen so that people know what's going on, how we're spending their tax money, the property taxes that we get, and so that they can make their payments well because it matters where that money goes. And our budget reflects the needs of the community, of the community. So include the community needs. Uh, I want to touch on, just very quickly, proper decorum here in the chamber. We do not use permanency because apart from our first one, our first lady here. And I would add for everyone, and it's not a pretentious or a titled notion that I'm going to say, but it's a matter of respect, that when you're addressing the council members that can use the titles that we have been elected with. Um, and because it will eliminate the microaggressions and the latent disrespect that we have experienced with some people. I also want to touch on the Trenton Housing Authority Choice Day program. I do, I would like for them to increase communication and they can print out the invitations to the meetings that they have or will have in the future and go door to door with them. Um, but I want to touch on the fact that they have had, at least that happens, meaning if I'm not mistaken, and I've been to a meeting, and it's only been over the course of two years, just about. So while we want to increase community engagement, I want to implore the community to engage with their, engage with the community, engage with your council authority within the situation. Go to the city's website and subscribe to it so that you're getting the invitation for anything that's coming up. And you can also subscribe department by department by department. And I'm willing to step up and show you how we did it, and I love the overall call and everything. Um, but just being involved, join social groups and organizations so that sure the rest of us acts in the community so that you're not missing out on what's going on. But, um, you, you can talk to them about increasing their hours in terms of going to where it's not expected. People do see things on Facebook, I'm not sure how they do their outreach. I would sit into a great moment for the people that are involved with those too. But I didn't see any for others, other meetings, just because I knew that person. So that's something that you can talk to them about. Um, and Councilwoman Gonzalez is liaison to Trenton Housing Authority. I'm sure she can, um, reach out to them about that. Uh, the eminent domain part of that, um, I know that's a scary word, eminent domain is scary phrase, but it's particularly for the abandoned properties, not the, not the properties that the community lives in. There's a lot of, um, the lack of any properties within that corridor that weren't in the king, Southern Street, and that area over there, and especially Santa First Street, that's a major part of it. And Trenton Housing Authority has the intention of fixing them and also helping the existing homeowners and renters properties, um, in terms of fixing the facade, getting bricks and things like that. It's a, it's a great plan, but, um, I do, I do agree that they do need to be better accomplished with that. And so that everyone has this understanding and not scared of that. And then it don't mean, because we have a lot of properties there. The city testing, showered out, and no one's responding about them, we can't do anything with it. And if it's not in redevelopment zone, which that is, and we just thought we'd ask for that study so that these properties can be returned to tax boards. We have a huge economic issue here in the city. Um, we operate a deficit which is part of our lean transitional pay, which is part of our lean capital base. And the biggest part of that is because we have mostly taxes on the properties here from our government. And the other part of it is, we have over three thousand abandoned properties that we receive tax from and, or tax rentals for that matter. Um, and that leads me to our salary. I don't want to dance around, it would be wrong, which is not a great tool. It was approved by the state and DCA before any of this. It was proposed by the administration originally, and we did say that if we didn't sit down with my actor, we've got some further funding with the community, um, with, with our agenda, our objectives, and things like that. And we stepped forward. Um, and it's been revisited because of budget and the following, um, finalization and process. And I will say, I'm going to go out of line on that. Though it's perceived that this position is part-time, it is not. We all spend a playboy twenty hours a week doing it. Just these two nights at home, it's about forty-five hours. And each one of us are in meetings Monday through Friday, and Saturday and Sunday. Even when we're on vacation, we resume the phone calls, getting to working up for the community. And, and I know that may seem unfair to, to ask for a salary increase, especially the outside. But, uh, so twenty thousand dollars is thirteen hundred dollars after tax. We don't get company, we don't get any type of anything else. And for the knowledge of people that come to us and ask where the nation that money is on before the end of the month, I'm speaking for myself, I do do a lot of outreach, and I do engage a lot of people out of the black community outside of this city hall in Patrickville. So I would ask for, um, just a little bit of grace for us on that because we do put a lot of, and also the concerns, their second, sorry. We have surplus in the budget, which allows for us to be more hiring for people and support the CAA to say, okay, we do agree. So, um, changing from fiscal year to a calendar year allows for us to have a twelve million dollar surplus. So that's why I'm seeing a little bit of things big to be put in the budget and things like that. So I just wanted to touch on that, and people will allow some grace. And I want to say, including, I went part-time in Congress this week so that I can definitely learn from this impact for me. So I'm definitely learning with salary.
Councilwoman, please, yeah.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for joining us here for tonight. Um, I just want to say, Trenton Home Schools started back today. Um, for all the students that are going back to school, I wish them well and have a productive school year, right, a safe school year. Um, I'm excited for what's to come. To Mr. Green's point about the necessary changes, um, overpopulation to the schools, these things are very real and they do exist, right? And so the community, just like people come out here to these city council meetings, needs to be present at the Board of Education meetings as well. Council has no jurisdiction over the school district, so let's be clear today. Um, but you have a voice, and you need to go out. I can put up a video of the, of the school board meeting that was held in August. There was no one there except for the board member, his him, and maybe two or three other people. Um, no one was present. These are your children, those that you've introduced, are your children that's affected by what is or is not happening. If you not see them and speak of, nothing will change. Also, to the point of what, um, what he mentioned, when it comes to who's doing what for Trenton, who's doing what for Trenton. The council, we all got together, we met with DCA, um, the other night, and some of the administration who was there was present, because we felt it was important that we hear for ourselves exactly what is going on and what is needed to help move Trenton forward in the direction in which we would like to see. We were given a lot of interesting and good information. We're hopeful that the administration will act on the things that it can act on to help our city to do better, to be better, and to grow. There is a lot of work though that we do need to do, and we also need to now move towards our state legislatures as well. We need to hold everyone accountable. Everyone needs to do their due diligence beyond the time of when it's election time. I've said that. I don't want the fish dinner, I don't want the chicken sandwiches, I want the work being done. To that point, we do the work, the salary of thirty thousand dollars, that has not been increased in over twenty years. People are looking at it from the standpoint of saying, you all are new, you're, you're individualizing it to the people. We're saying, in this position, it's been over twenty years, it is now twenty twenty-three. Uh, to increase to thirty thousand dollars, I personally feel is a reasonable ask. We are doing the work and then some. I am all from the school district in the summertime. I'm not saying this to be like, oh, Crystal, that's so nice, and I'm telling you this because it's fact. I have spent days here in the council conference room during the summer and put in summertime five, six hour days working on council business here on site. Here on site, above and beyond, because I want to make sure that I'm addressing the needs of all constituents and that I am doing my diligence as a council person, I'm responsible for everyone to make sure that we get our fair dividend. Some people would complain and say, you know, they send me some on Facebook. I direct them to my city email and say, please send this to me here. While it may be inconvenient for them, it works for me because I can include them on the email that I forward to the people to ask them to correct the problem that is in place. So I'm walking you through the process with me so you see that there is a system in place, and then we can track who is doing what, who has not, and it is memorialized so that we know what needs to be strengthened and moving forward. Also, to the point of customer service and training, I've spoken to, um, Paul Director Bridges, and I even put something out, I put that ego, I asked him the question about, could there be mandatory training for the directors and such? Was we looking into it to see about that? And I specifically said about council resolution, customer service, right? How to write a performance evaluation, and a certain thing, that some people in the city, they need to know how to do it, and they need training on how to do it. The fact that we do not have a full-time personnel director is concerning. We have supervisors in position that are working, but we need someone in place and a plan and a mechanism in place to make sure the proper trainings are received, proper evaluations are given, right? So that way, if there is an issue and someone does have to be removed from position, proper writers have taken place, and then those measures can be met to help move the process along without any problems or any pushback. Um, I think that that is it. Yes, I think that that is it. Oh, I do think that is interesting, and I liked the, the comment about using our executive investigative powers to look into certain things. Mr. K, this is Cologie, I'll be reaching out at some point in time to find out because I have concerns concerning the border department. I would love, I'd like for us to connect with us and talking to the council about us making that happen, or any department, or any situation that we may want to look into to investigate certain things. Accountability is important, and we need to know what's going on and make sure that the actions match the words of what we're hearing. And that's why we've been put in place, and we count your trust to do just that. Thank you all for coming out, have a great night.
Councilwoman, please, yeah.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, so first, um, I do want to thank my council colleagues again for, um, helping me manage the passing of dog breeding ordinance and the predator agreements. Um, those are two things I'm very passionate about, um, and they, or will both be, um, very symbolic and, um, will assist the city moving forward, um, especially to this and quite points, um, and to the meetings that I had, you know, prior to writing and us, um, putting these ordinance into power, um, that we need to make sure that things, this ordinance in particular is enforced as other ordinances, um, that we have. You know, we just can't put things forward, say, oh, this is a great idea, and have no plan in place for, um, enforcement. So, um, I, I really do, I really am passionate about both of those things, but for the breeding ordinance, um, being a voice for the voiceless, different orders in me. So thank you again to my council colleagues. Um, I just wanted to speak, uh, really quickly. Um, I really do hope that the issue can be resolved into an RCB data, our council president. I'm not just a scorer, I try to keep the motions out of things, and always the right thing. I don't vote for against anything that I don't firmly stand for, I don't firmly believe in. Um, tonight, for the record, I said no to table, because I would have liked for there had been, um, a, a dating place for its comeback, and I do wish that we could have needed to counsel Mr. Harrison's advice for the discussions to happen this evening after, um, our meeting. But definitely, you know, there, I just wanted to, you know, I just really want resolved. I think we're all doing such a great job on council, we've been really getting the work done. Um, you know, been very respectful to one another, um, and, you know, we're allowed to have surrender. We're allowed to have those, um, it's going to happen, it's human nature. Um, but I, I have all faith in my council colleagues that we will pass this or we will not be, um, a previous council whatsoever. Um, so just want to put that out here. Uh, I don't really want to speak to a lot of things that happened this evening, everybody else is speaking to them. I generally agree with much of the things that my council colleagues say. Um, I did want to speak to salaries as well. Um, you know, I noted people's pause, um, but city council salary, as, as we said, has been twenty thousand dollars forever. Um, the work that we do, as my colleague said, um, is, is great. The work that we do, as my colleague said, is is greater, I mean, we take away from our families, we take away from our regular jobs, all of us up here have full-time jobs, we take away from our leisure, we take away from so many things, because our phones, our emails are constantly going off, and if we don't answer our constituents in a very, very expeditions manner, we are getting threats. I have no support for the next election, you're not doing this, and you're not doing that. So I immediately sent out emails, twenty to thirty emails a day, trying to, and I wanted to take coolness again, I know you thank the administration a lot, but the administration's really working hard, we are communicating very effectively with one another, we are showing enough respect, we are showing less respect, and the work in the city is getting done. You know, I have been a professional for twenty years, seventeen and a half years I was a field investigator, the last two and a half I've been a director. I have burned my salary, I have burned my place in my career, and worked hard for it, and I say that, and I take those skills with me to this position, and we each have a worth, and if we are not going to demand our worth to do the work that we do, that's not fair to us either. We are here, we were elected, we talk the talk, but we're walking the walk, and we deserve our due for all the time that we put in, and all the care, all the thought, all the work, it's a pleasure. The ordinance is resolution, the recognition, everything that, you know, we bring to this table. So please, and again, that funding was already put aside, and that was brought to us, we, you know, we didn't bring it to the attention, we said, you want to raise? It was already said to us that this money has been petitioned, it's there, and we waited, we waited it to a balance. So, you know, I hope that the city can get past that and just let us keep doing our best we can do. With that, I want everybody to have a wonderful evening. Thank you for joining us tonight, and we hope to see you guys continuing at our meetings.
Counselor Feliciano.
Thank you, everyone, for being present here this evening. I just wanted to touch just a fellow thing to Sir Brett Mead. Yeah, I was to, I think I was the woman that was speaking, yeah, we did have some community meetings in regards to church and good, and I had some flyers that go out. I know we went out to the entire report, so maybe we can just talk about doing a better job, making sure everyone in the report is including what's going on, whether it's in the immediate area or for the out from the area that practically the polls. Also, I wanted to say to Ms. Dana, I'm just gonna hear, but Ms. Dana, I apologize for the city, for you two that experienced that, because customer service should be always present, you know, and wanting to help our constituents, and so I apologize if you guys experienced that, and to Councilwoman Feliciano's point, hopefully we can get some training in place for some of our people in the board chair of the hall, because not much you have to go through that when you're already experiencing difficulties with whatever your situation was. As far as the school inherited seeds, to Mr. Seidem's point, yes, I have actually expressed that concern since we've been in school the last two days, because I experienced it on Wednesday, Tuesday as adults, going into a building who had no air, and that training, and it was difficult for us as adults to focus, so I already know what it's like. I've been in, I've taught in schools with no air, so trust me, I know, it can be very, very difficult, but I have expressed my concerns about that. And also to the community, the fact that community meetings, I have been making my way, trying to make my way to most of the civic meetings, so I'm missing some, I know I missed one yesterday, just to get around the city, asking, being able to talk to some of the presidents and make sure that they know what's going on and things that are available for them, and also hearing the concerns too. And also to, I suggested to some of our people the other day, I can remember the D C A, to also have the same type of meeting, so we're trying to work on coordinating meeting with our legislators to ask for more money for the city of Trenton. You know, we doubt, like you said, we've just started demanding from some of the people who are running office or who wants to seek office, and so we're in the process of making that happen hopefully very, very soon. I also wanted to say congratulations to the working house for opening up, and congratulations to all of you, and I want to say, you know, I'm making my way over. And then also, just a quick announcement, that this Saturday, we will be hosting our fifth annual partying sober, that is sub-foundation and empowerment house, and it's geared towards individuals who are recovering addicts or who are in capacity for recovery resources. So please, I'm going to park between twelve to five P M if you are in the area, and also we have some content going on in Mercer County Park, and I think this is it for you, so thank you all for being present.
Counselor Anderson.
Look, my colleagues already said tonight, we need to be working with our local politicians to give more capital to the C A. We have to work together, the city never started with developing homework, which is great, we're already raising, got hired for twenty thousand, I don't think it's been something, a ten thousand dollar raise, a lot of people in the city hall right now would love that, a thousand dollar raise, we're working full-time. We still need more employees from inspections, we need more employees all over the city overall, but as I said, it's a work in progress, but we technically got to work together, that's what it's about. Regarding council president, vice president, I think it should just be worked out, the number over there, it just worked out and could move forward. It's good to see people in the community keep coming out and they're having concerns and working, moving the city forward. That's what it's all about, it's about community, always so big, and that's what I have to say. So thank you guys so much for coming out tonight, for the buddies, football fans, still nation, so, order to you, good luck, and we'll be out right here.
Well, first off, why is why? I want to thank, I want to say thank you to our colleagues tonight, for passing the porch fire facility, which certainly will help improve quality of life in the economic of our city, and also our organic training ordinance tonight, thanks for the work, and I'm very inspired of what I heard Mr. Clay tonight, and my colleagues speaking, trying to utilize better our animals in the city, but also as we found out, how much is costing our city, and that higher cost, because of what's going on, what we're thinking, is taking money away from things that can be given and all around the city and help a lot of the people. And also, I want to thank my colleagues for the amendment that we supported tonight for, to help mental health services regarding the young residents, and believe that this will be something that's going to pay dividends for your many years as we try to offer mental health services in our community, it doesn't have access to them. I just want also to echo, and if I can ask them to stand up, Elijah and their partner, please, I want to say this, please. Stand up. They're sitting there, they have a second round. These are budding entrepreneurs, the young entrepreneurs that are sitting, we need to mentor them, because as we try to build our company, we need more jobs here, small business owners, small entrepreneurs that have started that, so. I know you're quiet, but I'm a little louder, but I just want to give props to you, because it's important, what you're doing on the walk-in, the little vial work here, is so, so, so the work happens, so, so. So I just want also to echo, Councilman Edmonds, all of you that's standing in line for your behalf, a public budget meeting, people in the city want to know what the funds being spent on, and I'm a bit of that, and my expectation is, when next time, we will have such presentation. One really good thing that's developed, and this is an announcement I'd say officially, the new North Fork Publicity Advisory Council will be reconstituted and restarted on Wednesday, September twentieth, at five thirty to six thirty, at Galloway Baptist Church. Of course, morning, Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, Pastor Harris has welcomed us, which is, we're proud of that, and I know the success of C F A and other boards, I hope we can delegate that and help our neighborhood on safety and better place. So I also want to give a reminder that our Trenton football team will be playing a game this coming Saturday at two P M at Hamilton High West, so please do go to support the team, if you have some time available, it's very, very important, and it's our favorite guest, Paul Anhancer, in the back of the room, knows, council goes to support our sports play, football team, I'm sorry, I haven't been open all year yet, it's my car's been coming out, I'm getting these, but I can't wait to go for the home game, please come out and support, because it really does get lots of coaches and players, and I'm sure the parents too. So I also have some in groups, not so positive, so one of my neighbors actually is constituent, recently got a parking ticket, which is a topic to share, we're trying to basically, actually had a big discussion about this on Tuesday meeting, and a constituent got a ticket, which they gave me a copy of, it has a ticket on it, they follow the directions, and they put on their check their ticket number, where it was stay, and then they received a letter from the city attorney saying that they would not accept the check because they didn't put the license plate number or the date of violation, summons number, or plate number, so they accepted it with the file. On the ticket, it says the only thing they need to put is the ticket number. And what was really falling to this constituent is, again, training, they didn't follow their own directions and send a self-addressed scan back over the host of stamp, maybe by the constituent, so we had to wait until our host had sent it and sold that to this constituent. So I really want to urge our administration to clamp down, we got to find out what these problems are, because it's, we're hearing there are too many parts of the city that people get tickets at ten o'clock, nine o'clock at night, and then this stuff happens, and people are trying to do the right thing. We can't let that happen, we're a much better city than that. I also want to say to Reverend Farmer, thank you for coming tonight, and just to echo, but again, my council, my fellow council members, I mentioned the ballot, go onto the city website, if you do search a notified name, you will see how to get notified about everything, and just one last second there, regarding raises, I just want to echo my colleagues' comments, we did also make sure we waited, considering so careful, police and violence in there, and while the amount will seem a bit harsh, I can understand people's feelings, it literally has not been raised since at least two thousand and four. And we get requests every week to donate to different groups, to support different to ads, to donations, we get crisis situations such as, when North Trenton youth baseball had a recession in the past, everything was stolen, food and hot dogs, burners, grillers, a whole nine, to when one of the apartment buildings in the west quarters, all the heat went up, air conditioning went out, we had vans, recently we had another patient wear a bookbag giveaway, as difficult as this was to hear, we needed to donate socks, and we needed to offer money to help, just so it has a pair of socks. That's crazy, this is America, that should never happen, but it does, of course. So I just want you to understand, we're not taking, we're not asking for money, that we're going to go last day, so land a city, or go buy tickets to Lady Gaga on Madison Square Park, because this is about it all. This is funny, that we will actually return into the city, our city, help our city, and I just hope folks will understand that, because it is important. Every single person here, I'm honored to serve it, because I know it hurts, and I know someone's in need, a group's in need, they come to the city council, boom, 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 everybody helps. So just please know that, and I wish everyone a lovely night, hopefully a cool person, and I'll rest, we can take care of it. Thank you.
Counselor President.
Counselor President, I understand that the business administrator is about to make a statement, if that's okay?
Absolutely, please. After. You can go ahead.
Thank you, Vice President, and thank you, Counselor. The reason of me coming in, which is not usual for me to come and speak after, all of you have spoken, is our concern, some of the comments that are being made about our budget presentation. We weren't actually following any process that has been followed, or, at least since I've been here, it's the last four high budgets that I presented to council, we have never done a budget presentation when it comes time to this portion, the budget presentation is done during budget introduction, and then immediately after the next day, the budget is actually placed on the city's website. We try to be as fair as we can, this was not done by design or on purpose to, you know, not allowing individuals to go where the money's being spent. That is the reason why we actually put the entire one hundred and five pages on the city website. Anyone can access it, we have the budget presentation after we present to council, and then we have the document that is actually sent to the C A for review, and every number that you see, they can only see on the website. It is unfortunate that residents are not engaging in coming to these meetings, perhaps with your assistance, in your social media pages, you're out in the public, perhaps you can make a call for individuals to come and, you know, be part of the process and be here and ask questions. We are here to answer, we are here to support your needs for the budget. If you would like to see something for the next meeting, you know, we don't have a problem actually doing a synopsis presentation, perhaps a few minutes of what is in the budget, maybe as a refresher from what we did from the budget introduction. Some of the numbers have changed, so maybe similar to what we did for the budget introduction, we can all look for the next meeting if that's what the wish of this council is. I don't want anybody going away from here, and the topics are, you know, disappointing me, because we are not blocking anyone from coming here. We advertise it just like we do all the time, you know, the board sets out the agenda, it's on there, but then perhaps your assistance will help put in the message out to the public that these processes are taking place on certain dates. We, you know, we welcome your feedback, if it's something specific that you would like to see differently for in two weeks, reach out to me, reach out to Colin, reach out to the clerk, we can have a quick conversation as to what you know was expected, but we are more than willing to assist you in making it more public by having another presentation in two weeks. So that's all I was going to say. Thank you, members.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz, and I'm sure that all councilors agree, that we would ask, appreciate that, and I think, just as we're learning, because I think, okay, we're, we're still getting out, putting it all, but that's the journey, we're, things that we're expecting, we don't realize where we should be with the ass, so if it's here, we go back, we want to have a presentation, so we're learning, okay, so next time, we'll come for you all completely ready, but, but, but reporting out will be very helpful.
Something that you would like us to have, practice movement, work for, when we get to this stage, raise your flag, say, hey, we need that presentation for this day, you know, for this process, and this is what we're here, we're here to give you whatever support you need to make it more clear to the residents.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz.
Thank you.
The difference this year was we went about things differently, right, and we had the budget conversations that, I guess, if the public were to look and want to ask about the line by line, to hear the line by line, they would have been apart to hear, and so maybe that's the piece about the, you know, the presentation piece. I do think, though, that there should be more people in attendance when the budget is introduced and stuff like that, so to the point of, you know, we can use our platforms to, I guess, make it steer more people to come out and everything, even take the budget as posted and share it across the city platform, you know, the link to say, hey, here it is, right here, and then they still have the question, they still ask the question, it's not, it's not like they didn't ask it.
Right, and I'm not sure, I'm sorry, I couldn't, you know, if I was a woman, if I was a president, I don't know, so. my house there, uh, but I believe that you can also copy the links to your social media and say, hey, if you want to go with the budget, click on this link, and then you can say, go to the city website, and we can open it.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. So, um, I'm going to do my best here really quick. Um, most of the people I wanted to address had done, or some of them, I should say. So I'm going to address Reverend Farmer, who's sitting in the back. One, I appreciate, um, you and your family coming back to the city of Trenton, um, and how you are, um, just making sure you're in the, in our community. The dialogue, yes, we do need to figure out how we can better communicate with one another so that everybody has an opportunity to present, and that some of my colleagues have already expressed. I, I think at least constantly, one of the main issues that I have is again, all they themselves, we have full-time jobs, most of the meetings are going on when we are at work, so we can't always attend those meetings. The evening means that there's more, but again, our, um, our schedule is tight, because everybody is not sending. Uh, when it comes to, um, Ms. Harris, knowing she deserves that. And for you to have to have experienced that not once, but twice is not acceptable. So, um, we are not the, uh, a council that just sits and just takes, we're not, we don't sit still all those luxury taking notes, and we will have an address. Um, again, some people just are used to things being a certain way, and we have to understand that that's not how we do business, um, Councilwoman Evans said, we don't do personally. We have both partners coming in, they used to come in with signs, say, that's you. You know, we have folks who sit in front of that podium, we know, class, I, I watched a lot of them, who will come in and, and we will involve the language, that, yes, and yes, they're going to pursue. We have made very clear, we are going to be professional, we are not going to entertain that, it is not going to, we can be adults and we can speak to each other in a manner that we consider to be respectful. When it comes to, um, the animal shelter, um, yeah, there's a lot of work that is going on, and, and we've, we've got money, we're trying to help with those things, and so if things are moving around, um, freedom, we talked about our, um, our children, and just making sure we, we have our education, we have to address, that's always a priority. Our children, if we don't take care of them in the week, we're not taking care of our future, because it's just our choice. Um, Tika said, like, that is something we have been talking about, talking about, talking about, talking about, talking about. That is a big issue, the directors are aware of it, the police director who is here on Tuesday, they have all the men we have in the city that we are looking into. I don't want to do anything to anybody, anyone not doing anything to me. That's what folks come and say that podium had taken. I said, we take what is being said at that podium personally. And we always say, what they say about themselves, what they say about what's going on with you that's affecting you, it's affecting us as well. And so, I don't want to have to go back, I mean, we don't want to take all the work, go figure out why we didn't take it there, and not sweep it, and we don't do this after hours. I don't want to have to know why they see, because it should be present and we haven't gotten it, but we, what we have to do is get a better, um, a better way of communicating. So when we are predicting progress, we allow them to know that we are making progress. I might not be the progress that you want, but we are making progress, they are making tend to, we are not ignoring anything that comes before us. Um, the firing of three female, um, officers, that's something that we need to look at. We need to feel, we need to actively address it. Uh, we need to have a dress. Um, the, and that's stated, uh, but someone mentioned about, oh, Mr. Paul, that he issued the fire department members being cast. All of that, we need to fix. So it is something that we need to have all the way addressed. Moving to a, well, Councilwoman Gonzalez said, Councilwoman, um, well, you said, and I'm sure you're thinking, it's like, I've got to say, or the house, I was excited to be there, being part of, uh, the, we're hoping, congratulations, so excited, so proud, learning one more step about your life. So I am, um, learning, as I, as I, the more I hear about you, the more I watch you, the more I need your presence, the more respect I have for you as a young entrepreneur, and seeing you and Andre sitting there, I love you, what our city is doing to open up the doors, so that, uh, young entrepreneurs know you are welcome, you are wanted here in our community. So I want to, um, leave on that, and then I wanted to say, um, I had a great meeting today with Trenton, um, Native Initiative, I have lots of material here, if you know anyone who needs help with housing, you know anyone who needs help, even with their children, going to school, there, there are a lot of things, they're trying to innovate themselves back in our community. I have lots and lots, let's say lots, lots of material up here that I would love to have shared, I would share with you, I got, um, part of you, but if I apply to someone that you know of, you know someone that's in need of help, there are parents who can't get, um, their mortgage paid, their rent paid, their mortgage, they can't get, get their rent paid. You can get assistance here, you have students who need to get to college, you don't have this money all the way, there are requirements, but they want to work with you, they're just going to get it, but they will work with you. So, please, if you know someone who's in need, let them know, give them a call, they would love to hear from you. The last thing I want to address, it's a situation with Dr. View. I think a lot of people have talked about, there's a lot of, um, lack of communication. Everybody does not agree with everybody at every time. Does that mean that we are not going to talk together anymore, or not going to work together? Absolutely not. If you have a sibling, if you have a relative, if you have a spouse, you are not going to get along all the time, otherwise that means you're a pup. So, we're not puppets up here. We don't post time, everybody knows anything. We stay, why was a strong headed, they're going to be single, that's why we're a strong headed. So we will, we're going to be competitive at times, but does that mean we're going to stop working together? Absolutely not. Are we going to be like what your predecessors were? There's not a chance, and you know where, but I'm not saying, we are, we are not, we are not that. And we're going, and I know folks are sitting around, but there it is, the devil is alive. We are, they are not moving back, they can turn and turn, address unknown. We're going to agree, and we're going to disagree, but we're going to work through it, that's what this is all about. So, for those who are sitting around and waiting for it all to, uh, blow up, you're going to have a much longer wait, and I have to disappoint you because it's not about to happen, not an hour watch, not just my watch, not an hour watch. But that said, I'm going to read our Trenton mission statement, which says, recognizing that the people in Canton have been regarded with public trust, we are com, we are permitted to govern with integrity and physical responsibility, to seek, to seek excellence in the city's operations, and to serve all the city's people with respect and compassion. I thank everybody for being out here, I certainly thank our leadership, the law department out here, but our legal team, our court department, thank you all for being out here. I want to shout out Ray, Ray, you are here faithfully, you are even not giving a one minute, you are here, ladies and gentlemen, for all you do, but I definitely thank our security, um, you guys don't get named you enough, and even our DCA are here. We thank everyone for being here, the city, and pray to all your safety and stay with me, we're supposed to go away tomorrow.
Seven. 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 Eight. Eight. Eight.